The order, Town Council Committee meeting today. It's March 24th, 2025. I know you see on here is the public comments, but we need to go into closed session briefly. We won't be long, we don't anticipate that to last too long. So I wish you stay around and enjoy yourselves.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we go into closed session to discuss item number four under the Public Buildings and Welfare Section. This deals with property on McGruder Road and associated criminal investigation assigned there, too.
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion and we have a second. We need to go into closed session about the...
Yep, for the purpose of discussing consultation with legal counsel concerning legal matter.
Yes, we have, we have a motion, we have a second.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Butler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Biebermeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Do we have a motion to go back?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to return to regular session. I also make the motion to certify that only those items lawfully exempted under the Freedom of Information Act were discussed during closed session.
Second.
Yep, we have a motion, we have a second. Call for the question.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Butler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Biebermeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Who was the second?
I was.
Darren was. I appreciate y'all's patience about this. I know we don't like leaving y'all out here too long. So at this time, we have public comments. Anyone signed up lastly? Okay, if anyone signed up, if you'd like to speak, I would encourage you to. If not, we'll move to the first order of business with the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Public Safety Committee Chairs Bowman, Members Harris, Vice Mayor Harris,
We have no questions.
I trained him well.
Yeah, he did.
Any questions, huh? Members of council?
Not me.
Just a thought.
Yes, sir.
Great work by the police department always, particularly as of late with vape stores and another crime that was recently solved and continuing investigations. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cutler. Any other comments? Thank you. At this time, I will close to the Public Safety Committee.
And we'll move to Water and Sewer and Mr. Cutler.
All righty. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for coming. And, Mr. Mayor, this is the Water and Sewer Committee. And I am the chairman with Councilwoman Biebermeyer and Councilman Bowman. And we have one item, a presentation by HRSD to be presented today. Thank you for coming out. Mr. Bernus?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, really happy to be here. Again, I'm Jay Bernus. I'm the general manager, CEO of HRSD, here to give you an overview of what we've got going on. Next, please. If you're not familiar with HRSD, we are the eastern Virginia's wastewater treatment utility. And that's all we do. We don't do trash. We don't do stormwater. All we do is wastewater treatment. In fact, many of the localities operate and maintain their own collection systems, the pump stations and gravity sewer. So we own the large interceptor force mains and all the treatment plants. So as an example, we own eight large treatment plants in southeast Virginia and six smaller plants, including the eastern shore. We serve 1.9 million people, over 20% of all Virginians, in a service area about 5,000 square miles, which is about the size of Connecticut. We're the 14th largest wastewater utility in the nation out of about 17,000. We are a political subdivision. We were created in 1940 by the General Assembly. We serve 20 cities and counties from Virginia Beach west to Suri County, north to King and Queen, King William County, and we recently took over the eastern shore a few years ago. So in terms of financials, our expected revenue this fiscal year is 467 million. Our 10-year capital program is 3.9 billion. And just note that 76% of that is regulatory driven in the next five years, meaning our hands are tied. These are have-to-do projects, and I'll talk a little bit about that today. Next, please. So one of the things that even though we're the 14th largest, we are the most innovative utility in the country. I like to say we are the Apple or Google of the wastewater industry. We have the largest research group in the country. We have, it's led by Dr. Charles Bott. He's a worldwide renowned wastewater engineer. We have 23 staff, five PhDs, eight people working on PhDs. So that's not normal for any utility in the country. This is the largest in the country. Again, we get millions of dollars in research grants from Department of Energy, EPA. This is our SWIFT Research Center. So I encourage you, if you haven't been, this is our one MGD demonstration facility. I'll talk about SWIFT in a second. But this is where we do a lot of our potable reuse research. This is located in Suffolk, Virginia, at our Nansman Treatment Plant, which is where the town of Smithfield's flow ends up going. This also received the 2018 U.S. Water Prize Award. Next, please.
Quick question.
Sure.
Mr. Bott, was he on the State Water Control Board?
His father.
His father was.
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, he's, they've been in the industry for a long time and from the eastern shore. Yep. So bottom line upfront about SWIFT, we, HRSD, we saved the region $5 billion. As you could imagine, wastewater is highly regulated. So there were two main regulations that Hampton Roads was facing. One was Clean Water Act compliance for sanitary sewer overflows, and one is Chesapeake Bay restoration, as you know, for nutrient pollution going into the Chesapeake Bay. It's also known as Chesapeake Bay TMDL. State of Virginia has to do our watershed implementation plans. They're on their third one, which is due the end of 2025. And so if all the localities, if none, if we didn't collaborate and everybody did their own thing, if each county had, did their own thing, HRSD did our own thing, it would have cost us $7.8 billion to comply with these two regulations. Well, what HRSD came up with is we took advantage of EPA's integrated planning framework, which I'll talk about in a second. And the judge approved our plan in February of 2022. So instead of spending $7.8 billion, we're spending $2.8 billion because SWIFT has dual compliance benefits. It will comply with both of these regulations. So, you know, if you're asked about why are our rates going up? So even though we saved the region $5 billion, we still got to spend $2.8 billion, and so that's why rates are going up. So it's just not going up as much as it would have. So next, please. So this is EPA's integrated planning framework, something that we took advantage of. What EPA realized is that communities don't have unlimited funds to comply with all these environmental regulations. And so what they said was is that let the communities decide and prioritize what's most needed in your community. And so in Hampton Roads, we came up with the SWIFT project, which is a very innovative project. It's one of the largest projects in the world of its kind. And so we got, worked with all the stakeholders. We did some innovative trading agreements, which I'll talk about in a second. But that's the integrated planning framework. So next, please. And so this is what the judge approved. So just really quickly, spending $400 million expanding wet weather capacity in our sanitary sewer system. But instead of spending an additional $1.6 billion to remove 31% of the modeled sanitary sewer overflow volume, we said, don't spend it on that. There's no public health benefit, no environmental benefit. Spend it on SWIFT, and they agreed. And this is what the judge approved. So this is just a pictorial of the legal agreement we have with EPA and DOJ, Department of Justice. Next, please. And so what is SWIFT? SWIFT is we take our highly treated effluent. And so in the Chesapeake Bay, all of the wastewater plants are probably the most advanced wastewater plants in the world because of the nutrient removal technologies. So we take that highly treated effluent, run it through an advanced water treatment system. So basically, we're taking an advanced water treatment plant, putting it next to a wastewater plant, purifying that water, and pumping that into the Potomac aquifer. And by doing so, it has so many benefits. Reduces nutrient discharges going into the bay, creates a sustainable groundwater supply, reduces land subsidence, and protects from saltwater contamination. So I'll talk about each one of those in a second. Next, please. So what I don't want you to walk away here and think that we're pumping raw sewage into the aquifer. No, no, we're not, we're not doing that. Again, we have one of, some of the most advanced wastewater plants, and then we're adding this advanced water treatment plant. So it's this multi-barrier technology. So there's six technologies at this advanced water plant. And so this is what you would see at our SWIFT Research Center. So, you know, if the phloxid doesn't get it, then the ozone gets it. If the ozone doesn't get it, then BAC and so on and so forth. So there's six different treatment trends. The water comes out so pure out of this process, we actually have to add minerals back into the water to match the geochemistry of the aquifer. And so on the tour, you get to try some of the SWIFT water, which we're trying to make into beer at some point this year if we can get the regulations changed. But that's another story. Okay, next, please. So in terms of nutrient reductions, again, for the Chesapeake Bay TMDL, it's all about nutrient pollution. It's all about nitrogen, nitrogen and phosphorus. And so if you compare our nitrogen discharges from 2021 to 2028, we are reducing total nitrogen by over 70%. We are reducing total phosphorus by over 50%. And by doing so, that generates credits. And so Virginia has this nutrient credit exchange that we've had since 2005, and it's been very successful. Next, please. And so this is just to highlight for y'all, I'm not sure how the town and county interact related to stormwater. But because we are generating so many credits, Isle of Wight does not have to spend $40 million on these stormwater retrofits, which they were going to have to do by 2025. Basically, they were going to have to put in these BMPs in areas that didn't have them. So by trading these, and HRSD is giving each county locality the credits free. And that's how the savings are generated because our ratepayers are your rate taxpayers, right? And so it doesn't make sense for us to charge off for those nutrient credits because then it's just double counting. And so that's where some of these savings come into play. And keep in mind, that $40 million we saved Isle of Wight, that was $2017. That's probably 50, 60, 70 million today. Who knows? So this is where one of the savings comes from. And some of those cities are in the hundreds of millions of dollars, us trading these nutrient credits with them. So next, please. And so this is a cool, some cool pictures because this is from the U.S. Geological Survey talking about the significant decline of our groundwater in eastern Virginia. So as you can see, these are pictures from Isle of Wight, early 1900s. It was actually artesian, meaning that you just poked a hole in the ground. Water would come shooting out. And like that one on the left, you can see they actually had to have a valve at the top. That's how much pressure was in the aquifer. And the one on the right, it's interesting. So look at that picture. The farmer had to keep lowering it down because the water levels continued to decline year after year. And as you can see, it's getting towards ground surface elevation. So then, you know, it's not artesian anymore. So I'll tell you a little bit about why. So next slide, please. So if you look at the graph on the right, this is from the U.S. Geological Survey. As you know, there's two large paper mills. And so that weird circle at the mouth of the bay, that's where a meteor hit the mouth of the Chesapeake Bay. So if you ever see any pictures of cones of depression or anything in eastern Virginia and see that weird circle, that's where a meteor hit the mouth of the bay like 30, 40 million years ago. So in those cones of depression, the West Point Paper Mill and the Franklin Paper Mill. And so you could see, over the last 100 years, water levels have declined by over 200 feet because our aquifer is a confined aquifer. It does not get naturally recharged. So when you think it's raining that the aquifer is being recharged, that's not true. I like to say that our aquifer is being mined, meaning water is just coming out and nothing's going back in. That's why you've seen it decline over 200 feet in the last 100 years. So next, please. And so this is modeled results. If you look on the graph on the left with no SWIFT, two things to take away from this slide is, one is those little blue squares. Those are called critical cells, and that's how DEQ manages groundwater withdrawals. Basically, those critical cells mean that if water levels continue to decline, that permanent damage will occur in those areas. And so you can see with SWIFT on the right, 75%, over 75% of those critical cells get eliminated by pumping water into the aquifer. And what's interesting is, is the first plant's going to go in the ground in Newport News. And DEQ did this really interesting study to show how transmissive our aquifer is. And so by pumping water into the ground in Newport News, you will see that pressure increase 70 miles away within one year. That means you will see that in northern Virginia in just one year. So that's how transmissive the aquifer is. Next, please. So another thing that's happening is water levels continue to decline. It's causing us to sink. And so if you see, again, those cones of depression, those are clearly where we're sinking closer to where those paper mills are. But we're actually sinking all across eastern Virginia. So we are ranked 10th in the world of value of assets at risk from sea level rise is because sea level's rising and we're sinking. So 50% of the observed sea level rise is due to land subsidence, and about half of that is due to over withdrawal of the aquifer. So the idea with SWIFT is maybe we can slower stop the land subsidence, and we've got data to suggest that that's true. And we could talk more about that if you come to the SWIFT Research Center, about some of the data we have related to that. Okay, next, please. And so how do we know that we're sinking? One of the ways is through this device that U.S. Geological Survey has installed called an extensometer. And as you can see, we're going to have five extensometers in eastern Virginia, the most extensometers in the country concentrated in one area. That's how severe our sinking is. And so what an extensometer is, it's a metal rod, a straight metal rod that goes all the way down to bedrock around 2,000 feet below ground. And then at the surface, you see that device at the top, and it can detect surface level movements at a submillimeter level accuracy. And so next slide, please. Oops, sorry. One, go back, go back, sorry. So one of the things that we're going to have are these things called superstations. So it's going to have extensometers, it's going to have GPS, it's going to have satellite reflectors to use NSAR satellite data. So you can calibrate the satellite data to the extensometers, but it'll also have the typical benchmarks as well. So next, please. And so that's not all. So last benefit, well, almost last benefit. So imagine this is a cross-section of the aquifer. As you can imagine, we are right next to the ocean. So we're in a coastal plain. And so there is no barrier between the freshwater and the saltwater. It's called the freshwater-saltwater interface. And so as you can imagine, if you're pulling water out of the aquifer, you're drawing that saltwater in. So blue's freshwater, red saltwater. And so you can see that saltwater coming in. Once you have saltwater contamination into the aquifer, it's potentially irreversible. So Orange County has been doing this since the 70s, primarily just to prevent saltwater intrusion into their aquifer. So what it does is you push water in, creates a pressure barrier, and keeps the saltwater from damaging your aquifer. So the other big benefit, if you think about the aquifer, economic development. So think about the aquifer. It's all across eastern Virginia, all the way to northern Virginia, basically east of 95. From an economic development standpoint, you are not allowed to drill an industrial well in eastern Virginia anymore. So now the idea is, is if we pump water back into the aquifer, pressurize the aquifer, that opens up, you know, all the data centers. You don't have to be next to a distribution, water distribution system to get water anymore. So that's part of the idea from economic development perspective that we can market eastern Virginia as being water-rich again. Because right now, again, you cannot have industrial wells anymore. In 2016, in fact, they actually cut James City County's groundwater withdrawal permit below their actual usage, and they are staring down a $250 million water treatment plant. But if SWIFT works, they don't have to do that treatment plant. So, okay, next. So where we are in terms of construction, the first plant will be done by 2026. There'll be a 16 MGD plant. This is in Newport News. If you're familiar with Newport News, it's in the Riverview Farm Park. And then the one in Nansman, this is, again, this is where the town of Smithfield flow goes and located in northern Suffolk. It is, should be done by 2029. So by 2029, we'll have 50 million gallons of SWIFT water going into the ground. Okay, next, please. And then last slide, just to really, because I know I didn't have a lot of time today to give you the whole bigger, fuller, fuller talk. I was talking about one of our innovations. And so if you're not familiar with Anamox, it's a bacteria that was discovered in 1999. And through a decade's worth of research, HRSD has patented this technology. And we have the first plant in the world now doing mainstream deionification. And bottom line, what that means is we save 50% of power, 80% of chemicals in the wastewater process, saves a million dollars a year at that plant in your county. But more importantly, it saves 100 million in CapEx. And so we have this patent with DC Water. We have a number of other patents. We're probably one of the only entities in the country other than DC Water that has patents and royalties, again, because we are one of the most innovative utilities in the country. So the second plants will be James River in Newport News and another one in Nansman in Suffolk. So, and that's all I have, I believe. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, we have any questions for Mr. Bernus? Well, I think it sounds like a great project. Mr. Bernus, I appreciate you coming out and briefing the council and our citizens on this today.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Mayor, that is all for Water and Sewer.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cutler. Let me move on to Finance. Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, hang on. My iPad just shut down. Give me just a second here. All right, I'd like to open Finance Committee by me chairing it along with Councilman Harrison, Councilwoman Butler. First on our agenda is funding request for upcoming fiscal year. And it looks like we have four to be presented today. First one being from Western Tide Water Free Clinic.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers and staff. My name is Jessica York, and I work at the Western Tide Water Free Clinic. And I want to extend a gracious thank you to the town of Smithfield from our board, staff, volunteers, and patients. We would not be able to sustain our mission without the support of the town of Smithfield. While only 2% of our patients live in the town of Smithfield, I really do believe that the numbers that are reported today are still just as impactful. So last year in 2024, we served 43 Town of Smithfield residents in 269 visits. We saw 20 Smithfield, Town of Smithfield residents through 81 dental visits. All of Smithfield, we saw a patient population of 106 residents through 799 visits. So we are making an impact in the town of Smithfield. Through, those residents also received $75,000 worth of free medications as well as services that valued over $186,000. We will continue to serve the town of Smithfield with the support of this town. In 2024, we also were able to see record numbers across all service lines. Our dental clinic was expanded in 2024, and we saw an increase of 29% in dental visits and 71%, excuse me, 29% increase in patients and a 71% increase in visits. So we feel like we are making an impact in that service line. Without the dental care that we are giving to our patients, they would go untreated and live in pain and poor health. Many of our dental patients report Many of our dental patients report that they are not only healthier and in less pain, they have a restored smile, they have better self-confidence, they are able to maybe get a new job. So they feel that we are truly a safe haven for them and that we are a health home. So we are graciously asking the town of Smithfield to consider our request for the next fiscal year. I am proud of the care that we give to our county. I am a county resident myself, born and raised here in Isle of Wight County. I love the town of Smithfield, and I'm very thankful for the support you give the clinic. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
No, your organization does a fantastic and much-needed job, and we certainly appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And first of all, I appreciate all the work that you do down there. It's really a wonderful service. It almost seems like, is there a greater need in Smithfield for residents that maybe they don't know about it, maybe they... I'm just, you know, I'm just wondering if there are more people that could utilize the services but don't know it's available? Or what kind of outreach do you do up here to make sure that the people know that it's available?
Okay, so that was another point that I wanted to make, that I really ask each of you today to leave here as an ambassador for our clinic. Although we saw record numbers in 2024, I do believe that there are more people that need our services, whether it be an uninsured patient or a Medicaid patient. There are not enough Medicaid providers in our county or in the city of Suffolk. So we do encourage that outreach amongst just our community itself. Myself, as the Director of Development, I am out in the community quite often. I attend several civic group meetings, church, faith-based. I speak about it in my personal life, with my neighbors, my friends. And I ask everyone to just talk about it because prior to me coming to the clinic a year ago, I was a social worker out here in the county, as well as in Franklin City and Southampton County. And I saw firsthand the impact that my clients had, you know, on their lives through the care of the clinic. And now that I'm there, in there every day, interacting with the staff and the patients, it really is high-quality compassionate and comprehensive care. And if you guys are ever in the city of Suffolk and wanna stop by and see the impact of your funding, I would welcome you to come.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do know that Christian outreach client base do know about it.
I know they refer, yes, yeah.
And we're partnering with the New Riverside Hospital as well. And we also try to partner with agencies that deal with our homeless population, and we encourage them to send them to us as well for care.
And I'm referring back to the letter we received. Your requested funding is $11,195?
Yes, sir.
Which is, which ties in with the two percent population. Okay.
Yes, sir. And we do not include the town of Smithfield in our request for Isle of Wight County.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thanks for coming. We'll pass this on. Thank you. All right, and next we have Seventeen Fifty Isle of Wight Courthouse. Hello, David?
Hey, how's everybody?
Good.
Well, I'm a little embarrassed because the gentleman that just did the presentation, and he did that all with no notes and a PowerPoint. So if you'll forgive me for reading mine, I appreciate it. Good afternoon, Mayor and Town Council. I am David Hunley. I'm the Director of the Board of the Historic Seventeen Fifty Isle of Wight County Courthouse. And with me today is Jim Klein, our Treasurer. First, we want to thank you for the support and contributions you have made to the Seventeen Fifty Isle of Wight County Courthouse in the past. It gives us great pride that the Seventeen Fifty Isle of Wight County Courthouse is the symbol represented on the town's seal. It symbolizes the beginning of our county's government and the importance of that building as in our town's history. Our mission is to advance the Seventeen Fifty Isle of Wight County Courthouse and its remarkable role in the American experience. Our vision is, all who visit the Seventeen Fifty Isle of Wight County Courthouse are engaged by the story of its important building as seen in the context of the American history and inspired by its relevance for today's world and into the future. The Board appreciates the support you have given us in the past in order for us to continue our mission and vision for the courthouse, and we thank you very much for that. 2024 was a great year for the courthouse. First and most importantly, the Seventeen Fifty Isle of Wight County Courthouse Board became the proud stewards of the Seventeen Fifty courthouse. During the year, we welcomed close to eight thousand five hundred visitors. And not only did we welcome visitors from their community and local areas, but from all over the United States and several countries around the world. Presently, we have thirteen docents, eleven volunteers, and two paid. Last year, we recorded close to three thousand volunteer hours, which is probably an underestimation. We continued this year with many of our traditional activities and participated in a few new ones, working closely with Tourism Visitor Center to promote the courthouse. Our annual Court Day reenactment, we participated in Juneteenth celebration with a portrayal of Randall Booth, who saved our records here in the county. We had the reading of the Declaration of Independence on the steps of the courthouse, and we ushered the observance of the Constitution Week with the reading of the preamble to the Constitution. And we worked closely with the Daughters of the American Revolution on that. We participated in the vintage market, the mistletoe market, which we hosted the Cocktail Garden. We had our annual ghost walk, and we have had a very successful Christmas in Smithfield, which brought in close to one thousand visitors to Smithfield. We opened our doors during many of the downtown events, such as Galentine's Night, Witch's Night Out, and the Christmas tree lighting to welcome the community, and participated in the annual Christmas parade. For 2025, we will continue to work towards our mission and our vision. With many of our programs, activities, and events, which I mentioned earlier, we just finished Thursday, Friday, and today, matter of fact, sharing the history of the courthouse with just over one hundred middle school students and back in November with about seventy-five high school students from Isle of Wight County Public Schools, working on their Virginia 250 project. We will continue strong relationships, communication, and collaboration with Tourism and Visitor Center. We are also working on developing strategies to increase membership. So we encourage each of you to join us as a member of the Isle of Wight County courthouse. And specifically this year, we will be working on developing programs to celebrate our two-hundred-and-seventy-fifth anniversary of the building and our county's, and our country's two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of independence coming up next year. We operate, our operating hours continue as they have with closed in January. We're open on weekends in February and March through December, every day free to the public. Our commitment to preserving the Seventeen Fifty Isle of Wight County courthouse for our community and visitors to Smithfield is possible by our fundraisers, donations from community members and visitors to the courthouse, and the contributions from the county and, of course, from the town of Smithfield. These contributions make it possible to tell and keep the story alive for this remarkable building and the role it played in the American experience. Again, thank you for your support in the past, and thank you for considering your support in the future.
Thank you, David.
And sorry I had to read that.
We certainly have a gem right here in town, you know, while we're preserving, and thanks for being here. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Hunley? All right, we'll pass that request on. Just to be clear, requesting five thousand, same as we did last year.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, we have Friends of Smithfield Library. I was wondering what you were doing here.
Well, Jim was unable to make it. So I said I would gladly sit in and say hi to my former committee members and council members, and just come and just, again, appreciate all the contributions that you have done for the library over the years. And just to, again, ask for some more programming that you all can see in your agenda. And also just to share, when I was speaking to Ms. Terri before this, and for her, you know, just to appreciate all the help you've given to do some remodeling in there, which allows more people to come in, to keep it fresh and up to date, and just, you know, just keep it inviting. And also just to keep things moving to where it's fit in the community. You know, the needs of the community and the things that are popular, they can expand on and continue. So especially a big part was the rugs and doing some remodeling with the children's area. They're super excited about that. The school age program, they have the group that meets for third graders through fifth graders, and they do some book studies, same with the teen programming, and then also the summer reading program. And then the story walks, which are always such a big hit down Hayden's Lane or wherever they might be throughout town, that allow visitors to even get a little taste of what the library's doing in town. And the adult programming is also fun for the older people with the crafting and the mahjong. I'm not even sure if I'm saying that. They meet and play that. And then they also would like to do next year a Black History Month program with a Bright Star Theater, which they have used in the past, where they would actually come to the library and put on a play called Let It Shine about the American Civil Rights Movement. So the total request this year is for $3,289. And we hope that you will honor that and consider that while you're doing the budgeting this year. And I would also like to ask all of you to stop by the library sometime and become a friend of the library. It's just five dollars to join. And it just, you know, shows your support and encouragement for the library.
Wonderful. Always great to see a total request. I think everybody saw it at the bottom of the letter, $3,289. Anybody have any questions? All right, thanks for being here. We're gonna send that on to council.
Thanks. Have a good day.
All right, and next we have the Geneva Shelter. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, the mayor, council members. I am Marlisa Montgomery, the Executive Director for the Geneva Shelter. And again, we would like to thank you for your continuing support for our shelter. For over thirty-six years, we've been operating as a domestic violence, sexual assault agency. And during this fiscal year, during the fiscal year of 2024, the Geneva Shelter provided crisis and supportive services to one hundred and four families attempting to escape domestic violence in the town of Smithfield. We also provided 1,752 nights of emergency shelter and assisted seventy-eight clients with court advocacy support. We're in court each and every Monday for victims of domestic violence. We also responded to one hundred and sixty-seven hotline calls from residents of Smithfield. In the last fiscal year, we opened our new safe home, known as the Nora Safe House, which increased our bed capacity to, from thirty-six beds to fifty-two beds. And the Geneva Shelter has responded to more calls than ever before in the last six months. Our hotline calls are increasing, the stays and shelters are increasing. And I would like to share a little bit of information about those stays. We are a shelter program, which we provide ninety days of emergency shelter stays to our families. Due to inflation and the unaffordable housing problems that we're seeing in all of the cities all across the state of Virginia, our families are now staying in shelter to one hundred and sixty days. And in some cases, we are still not able to get them into permanent housing. And so this year, we're requesting ten thousand from the town of Smithfield to assist us with emergency shelter services and to help us with our therapeutic services that we provide. We recently received a major cut in our mental health services, and so that's why we're asking for that additional component to be added to emergency services. We also are in the process of trying to connect our clients with different housing programs that we were working with. We have been at a dead gridlock for over six weeks now, and, which means the individuals who are staying in emergency shelter, which I said one hundred and sixty days, will probably end up being one hundred and eighty days. We have not been able to move any of those families out of emergency shelter. And that's not the norm for us because usually we were able to at least get some of those families connected into permanent housing. But that's not the case anymore. They're sitting longer, the waiting list is getting longer, and we just don't know what we're gonna be able to do with them. We know that we cannot continue to keep them in emergency shelter because it's a temporary program. But we are facing a major crisis with the housing situation the way it is. So we, again, I would like to thank you all for all of the support all through the years. And in this year, we need your help more than ever before. And it's unfortunate, but we are doing everything that we can possibly do to try to get these families transition out of emergency shelter and into permanent housing. But that is just not the case any longer. Thank you very much, and I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Sure. I have just a comment. Requested $10,000. I believe our commitment last year and what we donated was $10,000 as well. So no increase in contribution?
I wanted to, I wanted an increase, but I was trying to be, you know, considerate. But if we could get an increase of $15,000, that would tremendously help us. But I was just trying to think about all of the other nonprofits and all the things that are going on and uncertainties that we're facing. It would certainly help us tremendously if there could be an increase.
I understand.
But I just asked for the level of funding that we had received in the past.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about the program, funding? Sir?
There's a lot of people that you're housing over a period of time. I was just wondering, what kind of support are you getting from family members in scenarios such as this? Are we going through a period of time where the family members are not stepping up to help? Or is it a dynamic where these folks are just out on their own and don't have anywhere else? I'm just kind of wondering, from the fabric of America, for lack of a better way of putting it, are we turning a blind eye to our loved ones? Or are we stepping up to take care of them when we can, as we should?
Very good question. I would say the family support in our situations many times is not safe for them to reside with their family members. And years ago, we would have family members and church family members that would step in. But because of the nature of our business and the recent cases of violence, a lot of these families have turned a blinded eye. They will certainly give us a call, bring them to the door if they could, just to drop them off. We're not seeing a lot of family support to take them in. The calls that we're getting are really pressing on our hearts, and that's what we do. But they're getting sadder by the day. You know, you're getting all these calls that people are living in their cars. And if you were to drive in some of these major parking lots, like the Walmarts, some of these are safe sites. So we're going into these safe sites to pick up because of lack of transportation in the rural communities that we cover. I know you all are aware that we cover the largest territory out of the state of Virginia, out of all of the domestic violence programs. We cover- We cover the entire Weston Tidewater area, which is six rural communities. And when we're in these, um, going in to um, help families escape if they are lacking transportation, we're seeing families sleeping in these parking lots at night. So these stories that we're hearing, um, families going two and three nights. And it was cold this last, this winter that we had. And we didn't have a lot of support from the churches like we used to have, the winter shelters. That wasn't there for us. We had four weeks and then we were back having these same situations of influx of calls. And in addition to the domestic violence calls that we're receiving, we're getting a lot of homeless calls as well. And so I would say that was a question that we used to could help uh, to try to transition a family and reconnect them to family members and try to work out all of the dynamics. That's no longer the case. And we do explore all of those options.
Well, Mr. Chair, as, as someone that worked the streets for many years, um, as either chief of police or working the streets and dealing with these type of scenarios, um, I just wanna address one of the churches. Um, our church used to participate with that, um, Good Shepherd did. And we had, you know, a lot of the churches around here that did it. And for the very reason that you articulate, as far as the, the dangerousness and the uh, the, the rise in mental illness with the folks that were showing up at the, at these homeless shelters or whatever, the churches just did a cost, not, it's not a cost benefit, but it's just a, uh, an exercise from a safety perspective to determine whether it was the right thing or safe thing to do. And it just got to the point where, you know, it, it just was not working out. Um, but I also sympathize with the fact that, you know, you're talking about people sleeping in cars and things like that. And, you know, I think the first, a lot of times, the first reaction is, well, what did they do to get themselves to get in this situation? How, you know, how, how, how were we blessed where we don't have to do this? Well, if you really look at the root of it, it's, it's more times than not, it's not anything that they've done at all, at all. It's a, it's a situation that they have been thrust into by one, one, one shape, form, or another. And uh, Mr. Chairman, I, you know, not that we're flush with cash or anything like that, but if this nice lady would submit an amended application for an additional five thousand dollars, I for one would be in support of, of supporting it. So, I get it. I've, I've been there, done that, know what she's going through. And um, I just think that if we could do something to help a little bit more, that would be great. But that's ultimately up to the council. I'm just, just giving my spiel. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I agree with you. If you would, um, resubmit your, your request.
I will.
And uh, council will be entertaining the matter next week. And we will uh, have a more inroad bust discussion if we need to at that point.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
I appreciate your help.
But thank you for all you do.
Thanks.
All right. Now we're gonna get into business. Let's see.
Laura can tell us how much money we really have.
That's right.
That's the best part, isn't it?
All right. Next we have uh, February financial statements, Laura Ross, our treasurer.
Laura. You have your packet. Um, one of the slides that I included, which I'm working on some new slides for that. I didn't put it up over the screen because of that. I just wanna talk about revenue that we generate um, from various sources. For example, the graph right, that you'll have that says revenue sources is five billion, five hundred and seven thousand. The majority of that comes from local tax revenue, which is three million, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, which is property tax, sales tax, and meals tax. Um, additionally, permits, fees, and licenses are one hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars. Fines and forfeitures, twenty-six thousand, three hundred and six. Um, revenue from use of money and property, which is interest and rentals at the museum, which is a smaller portion. We have miscellaneous revenue, which are grants and contributions of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. State revenue, which every year we get the PPTRA, which does not really change the amount, is five hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. And I mentioned earlier that um, ARPA is not on there, uh, because we don't actually generate that. It's two point two, two million, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Um, that gives me the opportunity to segue into something else. Last week, I was able to attend a collections course given by Treasurers Association of Virginia. And I just wanted to briefly go over what our delinquencies are. Um, personal property delinquents, and the bills did go out. And it's the, the first billing after delinquent. Um, the total including um, interest and penalty is three hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and seven dollars. And I can share these numbers with you if you want some more. Uh, real estate, uh, the delinquencies including penalty and interest is three hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars, which is pretty close to a lot, the way I'm, I'm thinking about it. I can get more detail. It's a lot. Um, there are several things that we can do to collect, and I'll, I'll present that to you at our next meeting. Um, after ninety days, we'll send out another um, delinquent notice to folks. And there are several remedies that we can have. We can do liens against wages, we can do liens against bank accounts and at the very, and, and that's um, on personal property. But there are a lot of things that we can do, but I, um, we don't really have that in our policies. So it's something we need to work on. Because if everybody's paying taxes, everybody should be paying their taxes.
What's considered delinquent?
Oh, the day after their due. Yeah. But we don't, we don't. Yeah, we usually give them seven days to do that. We think, in case things come in the mail, and once something's postmarked, if it's postmarked with the due date, then it's okay, we will accept it.
Okay.
Yep. So total revenue collected to date is seven million, seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand. That's fifty-two point forty-eight percent of what is budgeted. Um, and again, personal property was due in December the fifth. Uh, delinquent bills were made out, mailed out on March the seventeenth. And the total bills that were sent out were two thousand sixty-seven, and the total charges were three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and two dollars. Um, we'll talk about the um, I would say the sales tax. And Iowa White has been sending that monthly with the distribution of where it comes, where it's come from. And, and prior, we did not get any breakdowns, so we start, we're starting to get that. Um, meals tax totals, one million, four hundred and fifty-one thousand. Um, of all the taxes, this one is second compared to real estate. Um, sales tax budgeted is two million, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And we're a little, almost halfway there. We'll jump over and talk about expenses. Total expenses right now are seven million, two hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And that's forty-six percent of our budget. Um, we're starting to see where revenue is increasing over our expenditures, which is where we want to be. And we'll bill for real estate, it'll be due on June the fifth. Um, so that's that. And you have your debt breakdown in your packet. And we finally broken the four million dollar mark. So right now, total outstanding debt is three million, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, oh seventy-eight. Okay.
Real quickly, on, on that same one, series twenty twenty A, two and one. What, predominantly, what are those amounts for?
That is for um, general fund and a water that was rolled over from other debt. That's what's happened with that. And I can give you a breakdown of which percentage it, it is, if you need it. But the rate's pretty good.
Yeah.
I'd say one point six seven.
Yeah.
We'd love to get that for everything else.
Yeah, good.
Yep.
All right.
I have a question now.
Um, Laura, you've mentioned delinquencies. Did I hear you correctly to say that we don't have any thing in writing as far as how to collect?
Uh, no, we don't. The Code of Virginia follows a, a pattern of things that you can and can't do with collecting the debt. But as a town, we don't have any procedures about that. We can follow the code unless there's somewhere buried that I can't find them. I searched and didn't really see much of anything out there.
And you have to follow state code.
Yeah, but we can't follow the code and adopt that.
After three years, you can sell their, in real estate, you can sell their property.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
But there's, every, just say that, there's, there's a, most, every locality in Hampton Roads has a uh, collections lawyer on retainer. Um, the Jim Reed in um, Newport News does the collections for, for Suffolk and Iowa White and Surrey and, and if we've got that much delinquent real estate, we ought to retain him and let him collect it.
I only ask because we do have some delinquencies now. Um, have we collected before in the past? What have we done in the past?
Treasurers never told me to collect anything, so.
Okay.
The answer is, the answer is nobody's ever said, we need to collect this real estate.
I'd like to start collecting on it, we can, we can.
Well, if, if it's real estate, you'll get, you'll get every penny out of it, but you gotta go after it.
Right.
The, the, the personal property, the, the, the stop, um.
Yep.
That's the most effective, what, what do they call that?
DMV stop.
DMV stops, that's, people can't get their.
And once you go beyond that, you start booting vehicles, things of that nature, and that generally gets people's attention pretty quickly.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Or debt set aside, you win the lottery, you don't get your thing.
Yep, exactly.
Now, the uh, Iowa White sends out treasurers liens to, if they know that um, somebody has a, else, you have, you can do that as well, you can.
Yep.
If you know somebody, if, if somebody owes taxes and they haven't paid them, she can send a treasurer's lien notice directly to their employer.
Yep.
And you have, and the employer has to take every penny of this month's paycheck and send it to her.
Yep, we can do debt set off, I just signed up for that. Um, and it'll take a couple of days before they approve it. Um, but before I do anything, I wanna get approval that it's okay to do it because y'all probably hear about it, maybe, maybe not.
Well, this is a good topic for discussion. Uh, and I know a bu- bunch of you are probably sitting back thinking like, like I am. If you got questions, let's, let's ask them now. I mean, this, this is, this is the platform to do it.
Yes, I have a question. Uh, Treasurer Ross, um, are all those delinquencies that you highlighted, are they current year or are they?
I don't have that information right now. I, I had to have our um, fellow that pulls all that data is gonna do that for me, but I'll let you know. I am supposed to present to you, I noticed, in our, um, I don't know what it's called, that Smithfield policies or that are out there, what's that called? Um, code, maybe?
Our code?
That I'm supposed to, or the treasurer's supposed to share with you all the delinquencies at the March meeting. Um, but we'll start doing that, or before, so. Yeah, but I can, I can provide that information to you.
Great.
And drill it down. It's about, the personal property one was four thousand lines long, so it was pretty significant. And includes small numbers, some of the stuff, and it does, after five years, you can't collect it. So we need to collect it as soon as we possibly can.
Michael, do you have anything to add to this? Cause I, I honestly don't, don't think we've, I've had this discussion the past couple of years.
No, and, and we, we haven't. And we can, I'll work with Laura and put together a plan to, on how to move forward. We did some pretty aggressive stuff in Windsor that, once you do it and people hear you're doing it, um, it's amazing the folks that'll come and pay, you know, for booting. I mean, it goes far enough, you can start seizing vehicles. Um, but once you start booting a little bit, it's amazing how quickly that gets around and people come in and pay their bill. So we, we can look at some options and bring something to council. Cause I mean, you will, you'll get phone calls as soon as we start doing it. People, somebody will call and complain and, um, but we, we can put a plan together and bring it to everybody.
Do we have a mechanism for um, payment plans or something like that?
We don't. Um, the reason being, we do have a, a payment pan for taxes. But also, I wanted to present another program that we used, I was in Arlington County. It's called our um, Treasurer's Assistance Program, and it's administered by a bank. It has to be approved by the treasurer's office, and you look at what's outstanding. But they sign a note with the bank, and they owe the money to the bank. The bank pays us.
Gotcha.
So I've been talking to several of the banks that would like to administer that. Um, I put together some more information for you about that.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. I mean, you know, obviously, we want the bills paid, but sometimes there are circumstances that we want, you know, we wanna work with people too, so.
Sure, I'll get that to you.
We don't wanna add to, you know, medical bills or a situation, whatever. We don't wanna add to that. We, you know, these are our friends, our neighbors, our, our, our residents that, you know, that we are here. So we need to make sure that, you know, we don't have to be the big ogre in the building either, so. Thank you.
We just want them to pay.
As far as the payment plan is concerned, just, she never turns down money.
Right, absolutely. We'll take whatever you got.
If somebody comes in and says, I'm behind and I'm gonna pay you X per month.
Sure.
The next three months, she's gonna pay.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
The only thing I would say is our, this financial software that we're using right now has difficulty with prepayments.
Yep.
Um, payment plans, we can work on, but prepayments, our system struggles with that. Once we go to, whatever new system we wind up on, that, we should be able to do prepayment and so on. But the bright system that we're on now can't really handle prepayments.
No.
How often do people wanna pay ahead of that?
I've only heard of one.
We, we had an issue a couple of weeks ago.
Right.
I got a phone call, I think the mayor got a phone call as well, where somebody was prepaying their taxes and the, the town sent them a check back.
Yeah, it's not very often.
We're finding out our software can't handle that.
Right.
Throws it out, it's overpaid.
And if that helps them so that they're not delinquent, you know, they can set aside a little bit each month. I mean, let's work with people, you know.
And the new systems that we're looking at do, they do have that. Yeah.
Right.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have one.
Please.
Probably for you, Michael, if we began a program of booting or seizing, do we have to codify that?
Um, it's in state code. I mean, you can do it, and we would hire an outside entity to do that. We wouldn't necessarily do that in-house. And there are several firms around here that do that kind of work. But state code permits us to do it already.
We, we don't wanna do that in-house.
No.
There's so much safety involved and things like that, and image involved and all of a sudden.
Yeah, there's, there's several firms in the area that do that work.
The same thing with delinquent real estate. Um, there, there are firms that are set up to do that. They do it, and it's, it's a machine, but you gotta sign up.
Got a question. So Laura, just about six hundred thousand delinquency in the, in the two pots.
That's right.
Yeah, would seem to me that we ought to be looking at it.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
All right. Uh, are we on to cash balances?
Yes, we are. Um, as you see, you'll have a copy of your cash balances and a little bit about the investments. Um, let's see, so cash balances at the end, the bank balances and general ledger balances. As you remember, there are some intercompany balances between the two, and that's why there's a bit of a difference. So VIP and usable balances, the bank balance shows fifteen million, but the true balance is twenty million, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. If you'll flip over to um, investment benchmark, yeah, that shows right now currently all of our balances, including bank balances, are twenty-five million, four hundred and fifty-seven. Um, however, a little bit of that is funds that we can't use because it is over in the um, uh, designated funds group. So right now, if we look at uh, the vehicles that we've had, total year-to-date interest that we have achieved is four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars. And we hope that that'll include for the rest of the year, so we'll be a little bit higher. Next year, I'm not real sure what the rates are gonna do, obviously, so I'll constantly look at that. The second page includes the compliance report, and we are in compliance with all of our investments. And I believe that's all I have?
That's good news. All right. Anybody have any questions? Ms. Ross? All right. And we shall move on. And next on the agenda, invoices over twenty thousand dollars requiring council authorization. Looks like we have one from Lewis Construction. I believe that refers back to the Red Point. Looks like we have one from Lewis Construction, I believe that refers back to the Red Point, it does. To Lewis Construction for twenty-three thousand dollars even. Any questions about that? Okay. Well, that will conclude the finance committee, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Next, Parks and Recreation, Ms. Bee Vermaier.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to open the Parks and Rec Committee meeting, and I'd like to welcome Amy Novak.
Thank you, good afternoon, everybody. As far as park updates, we had a busy month here this, this March at the Smithfield Center, it's where most of our events have been. Last week, we had a three-day conference, Geo-Virginia, that brought in people from all over the state of Virginia, and they ate at all of our local restaurants, they had four different caterers here throughout the conference, and stayed at our local hotels, so good for the town of Smithfield. And then we ended the week with the Women's Club Flea Market, it's their annual biggest fundraiser that they do, and they do it here, and it's a really good time, they really enjoy it, and they work hard. And then this week, don't forget, we have the Chamber Legislative Breakfast on Friday, still time to sign up, I'm pretty sure, I'm still taking reservations. We did the ribbon cutting at the Luder Sports Field Six building this past month. The ravine bridge, which was our last large bridge at Windsor Castle to renovate, was completed. We have two small little foot bridges that they're gonna do, but they won't cause any detours or anything like that. And then we had the Master Naturalist install the tree identification project, which identifies thirty-seven species of trees in the park, and then also talks about the longleaf pine, of course. So that project is all done, and then the QR codes on the signs out at the park, they lead right to the Master Naturalist's website, that gives you more information about that. And then our revenue share for the kayak kiosk this year was eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars. So very impressive for something that we don't have to do anything for or with, just runs itself. Any questions for me on the updates?
And then you want to talk about the Share the Air campaign?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Bowman just wanted to make sure that there weren't any legal situations we could get ourselves into, even though the signs weren't enforceable, we didn't want anybody to perceive them that way and present any challenges that way. I spoke to Attorney Riddick about it, and he said they're not enforceable, and it's obvious by the way the signage is worded, so we were safe there. So I'd like to go ahead and implement them at the two parks, Windsor Castle Park and Luder Sports.
And is this just one sign, Amy, at each park, or there are a bunch of signs, or can you tell us a little bit more about that?
I don't like sign clutter either, so I am concerned, so I think I'll put, there'll be one sign at Windsor Castle Park at each entrance. So there's five park entrances at Windsor Castle by the kiosk, so hopefully I can affix it to the kiosk to reduce the sign clutter. And then at Luder Sports, we would do one that leads you to the baseball clover at that park kiosk sign, and then one that leads you to the football field at that area, to encourage no smoking at the parks.
And these are places that are, I mean, all pedestrians will be.
Yes.
Walking through. Any other questions for Amy on this, or anything else?
Mayor, do you mind if I ask a question?
No, please, go forward.
Just one question, Amy, with events going on at the park, I know the Smithfield Bacon and Bourbon Festival has a cigar area.
It does. Yeah, just like.
How will that affect that?
Just like with alcohol service, we would allow it for the events, and of course, they designate areas for these activities, so it'll be permissible during that.
Okay, thank you.
And I know the mayor had asked about doing it possibly town-wide, I'd like to roll it out in the parks first and see how it's received, and then maybe go further with it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
I'll close the meeting for Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Ms. Bee Vermaier. Next is Public Works, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I am the chair, assisted by Councilman Brooks, Councilman Bowman. The last time that we met, we had a very brief consideration of a project to look at, the streetscape on Gray Street, and we decided we wanted to have a little bit more time and receive a little bit more information. So we have two folks here today that are gonna share with us and answer questions of council, Mr. Stallings and Mr. Edwards, so, Michael, all you.
Yes, sir, as Mr. Harris indicated, there were some potential additional questions brought up at the last meeting, so I asked Mr. Edwards to be here to represent Historic Smithfield and kind of give you, you know, any perspective that you may need from them on what they were thinking about, and if there's questions of, of me, I'd be happy to answer them as well. So, Mr. Edwards is here, and you can address any questions you might have on the progress.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members, I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you. Historic Smithfield, which some of you may not be familiar with, was established in nineteen eighty-eight when the first street project was proposed based on a grant proposal, an offer from Jill Luder III, he offered two hundred thousand dollars if we, meaning whoever we was at that time, would raise matching money privately. We created Historic Smithfield with that in mind, and assisted the town with planning that streetscape, and I think it was very successful. We later applied for IC-T funds to extend the project down Main Street to Underwood and down the hill to Commerce Street. Later on, we acquired the Colonia Courthouse on a request from Preservation Virginia, which was getting rid of some of its property, a lot of its property, and looked at us and thought we were capable of taking care of it. We raised two hundred thousand dollars for that project and restored the courthouse, and have since turned it over to the very capable hands of David Hunley and the Allen White Courthouse of seventeen fifty. Now we're back to a, what do we do now? And the thing that came up in our minds was Gray Street, which has been kind of overlooked over the years. Main Street was put in good shape, requires ongoing maintenance, but it looks good. Church Street underwent a major project years later. Gray Street has had some sidewalk patching, and that's about it. It's a beautiful street, beautiful homes, and the homeowners have, in recent years in particular, have taken extra care of it and of the yards and whole business. Streetscape still looks old. And we felt like now with, with VDOT getting ready to rebuild the street from the ground up, or deepen the ground up, would be the time to look at a streetscape project and hopefully give the council and residents of the street a couple of options to look at ways that it could be improved. We don't envision a Main Street project because that would involve underground utilities, and that's just not gonna be practical today, I don't think, with, you know, the cost of, of doing that. But there are other things that can be done with the utilities, there are things that could be done with the planning areas, and, and by the way, when that street was built in approximately nineteen thirteen, and I haven't been able to nail it down exactly, but it shows up around nineteen thirteen as an existing street, oh, two Curry Street. Whoever, whoever designed that had an eye toward design by putting in the planning areas that are in those two blocks. When they got up to the block from where the fire station town hall is over to Mason Street, they just wanted to get a street in there, and they didn't worry too much about landscaping or anything else. So there's an opportunity now to plan for the future. We don't anticipate the town would build out a streetscape project right now, but it ought to have a plan for where it would like to go with it in the future, and that's what we offered a grant to the town to do. It didn't quite fund the whole thing as we had hoped it would, it came to thirty thousand, five hundred or something. We had come up with twenty-five. We felt like a partnership with the town would be the way to go anyhow, because it's your street, your project, and your residents who are gonna have to sign off on it. We're happy to help in this initial phase to get something on paper. We're happy to hold meetings with residents to get ideas from them, but you gotta have something on paper to show them before you can do anything, and that's what this is. It's not engineering plans or final plans, it's conceptual plans, and that's what we're offering.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Have you, I saw the presentation previously, have you identified any particular objectives, or is it just kind of a blank slate to the consultant?
Sidewalk improvement is the biggest thing that can be done there, there's just not, not a whole lot that can be done, but the state will be putting in new curb and gutter, and now is the time to decide what ties into that. For example, if you're gonna put in brick or simulated brick or something like that, private driveways probably ought to be planned in conjunction with that, they would be put in first, and then streetscape come later, but they need to, they need to be compatible with whatever the town wants to do ultimately. Personally, and I think Historic Smithfield Board agrees with this, if it's at all possible, we'd like to see a sidewalk between Hayden's Lane and Mason Street to facilitate pedestrian traffic. It's just an awful place to walk, and so we would like to see that designed if possible. The engineers that we talked with have suggested that we might put planning areas in at the town hall, parking lot, on the sides, make an entranceway to that parking lot that just looks more attractive than what's there now. That's pretty much it. We're, we're not talking about any major project, just dressing up the street. Incidentally, the Main Street project grew out of a plan just like this one. For Main Street, that was drawn by Virginia Tech students all the way back in the nineteen seventies, and there was no money to do anything about it for over a decade after that, until Jill Luder made the offer he made, and we got into it. But that plan sat on the table for a year, ten years before anything was done, but it did provide a basis to move ahead when we, when we did.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I had the benefit of watching that project almost from its infancy, and the people rally around improving what is now really, really nice downtown, and then even furthermore, going down to the South Church Street project and things like that. I applaud the fact that we still have folks like Mr. Edwards to still be thinking about the future, thinking about what's next on the plate as far as making our town better. And he could be sitting at home in the, in the easy chair and just wilding away the days and not, not doing this type of thing, but he's not of that ilk, I've known him for a long time, I've known the folks that he associates himself with, and I know that they're, they're go-getters. We're asking, I think, asking the town for five thousand dollars?
Five thousand, two hundred.
Five thousand, two hundred dollars. Not to demean in any way, shape, or form, because I advocated for an additional five thousand dollars for the Genevieve Shelter, not to demean those folks that have come and asked us earlier for funding because they're very worthwhile causes. I think by having this meeting now and having discussion, we're doing our due diligence as far as assuring that the town's money is being spent in an appropriate manner. And he's right, the last plan did sit around for about ten years, as I recall, but then it was put to work, and we have what we have now. I remember Main Street, and one can say this was, this is idyllic or not, or whatever, my job on the four to twelve shift as a police officer was turning the Christmas lights on that went across the street. And things just didn't look the way that they do now, they just, they just didn't, it looked, it looked like your, your typical seventy, sixty-seventies downtown that, if not for a little bit of work, may not have survived the vibrancy that we have now. So I, I applaud them for, you know, for trying to get this moving along, and I think it's a good idea, thank you.
I have two more questions.
Mr. Cutler.
Yes, thank you, thank you, sir. You may have said, what were the boundaries, was it from Main Street to North Church, or was, was there a, a different boundary?
You talk, this particular project.
For the plan, yeah.
Mason Street to COP, where Church, Gray Street bends down, goes into, into Main Street. It will tie into the Grange, it appears, but we just don't have formal plans yet as to how all that will work. But it, it, it comes at an opportune time in that regard as well, because it will be an entrance to the Grange. It's also a significant part of the town's walking tour. A lot of people, Mr. Harris can tell you, come down that street during season, and I guess off-season as well, and look at what, what these good folks have done with their properties, and this'll just dress it up and make, make the whole experience better for them.
Thank you, sir. A question for Mr. Stallings, or for, or for planning. Is Gray Street enhancement, is that addressed in our comprehensive plan?
I mean, I don't know if it's addressed specifically you, but I mean, we, we talk about enhancement of walkability and pedestrian mobility around the town, so that would definitely hit that.
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest that if, in the event that we decide to approve this, that we maybe ask for it in a scalable nature, you know, this could be something that the artery, the arteries that connect Grace and Main, as well as, you know, kind of mirrored on the other side on Cedar Street and arteries to Main from there, could certainly prevent us from having to make another plan in the future.
Yeah, we can definitely take some of these principles and apply them to other locations throughout town.
Thank you, sir.
If I may, the fact that it's an historic district, the comp plan does address the continual upkeep and addressing and improving of the historic districts.
Right.
That link is there. John, one of, they also come up and peek in the windows, which is. Kelly's sitting behind you.
Legitimately or illegitimately?
Just come on up, have, you know, have a look. And one of the things, anybody else, if not, I'll add a couple of thoughts.
I just have a quick question. And I want to phrase this in a nice manner, so. Obviously, the group does, has done a lot of good work around town, and far be it from me to say how you should spend your money. But if we already know, okay, we want a sidewalk from Institute to Mason, we want the parking lot entrance, you know, there are a couple key things that we want, and knowing that money is always an issue down the line, do we not just say, okay, these are the things that we want, you know, we're gonna be doing this sidewalks as part of the, part of the Gray Street renovations and stuff like that? That the money's just better spent towards that, if we already have, that's the plan already, do we need somebody else to tell us a different plan, or just to reiterate that that's a good plan?
Is there a plan that I'm, I'm not seeing?
I'm just saying the plan, you've given us some ideas, you know, of what you're thinking already.
Yes, ma'am.
And isn't that, do we need to have the whole study done and, you know, the, and spend all the money on that?
I think you do, and, and the reason is that, well, let me, let me get a little bit.
I'm kind of playing devil's advocate, so I'm just, you know, trying to just ask you.
Into, into funding here, I don't want to get into that too deeply at this point, because there isn't any money to, to build us up.
Right.
But when we did Main Street, it touched a nerve in this town, because everybody, it was everybody's Main Street. People who grew up here wanted to participate. I had a retired lady call me. I had a retired lady call me on my way home one day and said she'd like to discuss what we were doing because it sounded good. I went by to see her. She lived in a little upstairs apartment and showed her the plans. And she said, well, my family was in business there for many years and I wanna help. So she handed me an envelope. I went home and opened it. It was thirty thousand dollars. And she didn't have a whole lot of money. But that was the attitude because it was Main Street. Now, when it came to Church Street, as Mr. Riddick can tell you, it was primarily the residents of the street raised a lot of the money. All of Smithfield Foods gave the bulk of the money and the town put in a chunk as well. And that was an expensive project. We are not thinking this is gonna be that big a project, but it just, nothing has moved on it and we thought it was time for somebody to look at it and say, you know, you could do this. And by having a plan, by having some renderings, and that's what you're gonna get out of this, will be some renderings, could take that to the residents. I believe if I had a house on the street, I'd be willing to put in some money to have, have bricks in front of my house. I hope residents of that street feel that way. And, and so that's, that's gonna be part of it before it's over with, is to go to residents and say, do you want this? And if you do, are you willing to help? And you gotta have a plan before you can even talk about that. And so that's where we are.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Cutler.
Yeah, one more question. You addressed, I'm sorry, two more. You addressed some illustrations that would be made, so are we asking, is it gonna be specific so where we can go from plan to, to build or is it gonna be really general?
This is conceptual in nature and we'll have some rendering so that when we go to people, whoever it is, and try to raise funds for this, and they ask, well, what are you gonna do? We'll have something to show them. I mean, depending on the depth of the project, you may still have to go have engineering done, but this is not engineering work. This is conceptual work to show what is possible.
Thank you. And in this, in the proposed study, is there an opportunity for Gray Street or general Smithfield resident input?
We will be able to do that as us. The consultants are gonna go look and say, what is possible? And they'll give us some ideas of what's possible that's then incumbent upon us to do that work. And we'll do that work once we have some ideas of what's possible and what options are out there. And that way people will be able to weigh in on options and which direction to move forward.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That is a great segue for maybe two of the things that kind of popped up that prompted this particular discussion. Didn't, didn't seem to be clear originally whether or not doing the project would commit us to spending any more money. And you both have addressed that very clearly today. And the other concern was one of the assumptions, assumption number one and the prospectus was it looked like it was saying no citizen input.
That's not true.
No. Now that you and Michael have explained that, I think that it takes a limb. Once there is something for the citizens to see, then the citizen input process part would come along.
Yes, sir, and we will drive that.
Right. Any other questions or comments? John, you good?
Can I just ask quickly?
Sure.
So when you get the citizen input, do you get that before you do this study or you, you would afterwards?
They, they will come back, as I understand it, and I'll stand to be corrected. The engineers will come back to the town with two options, kinda, sorta. And you will make the decision on which, if either you want. That would be the point before you do that, that we would ask residents, I think, to have an input in, in what they think, and then that comes to you for a decision.
Or would it be better for you to ask citizens now, not just downtown, but citizens overall, say, what are some of the things that we wanna do here? And then feed that to the consultants so they know what we're looking for? If they come back and say, well, we should do a boulevard down the middle or, you know, whatever, and nobody wants that, well, that's kinda wasted money on their, you know, if we give them ideas of what we're looking at, I, I don't know, that seems...
Personally, I think you've got to have something to show people.
A professional starting point.
That's what we're asking, is professionally drawing sketches.
Yeah, but should you get citizen input first?
No, no, ma'am.
What, what this'll do is we will find out what is possible.
Okay.
And then we can have input on what is possible and how do we cater what's possible to what best suits everybody's desires. The issue is if we go first and we get ideas that are not possible, then we look like we're not doing what the citizens asked for. We have to determine what is possible and then let input mold that possibility to what fits what people want.
Okay.
So that way we're not setting people up for failure by not being able to give them what is they want.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I envision a situation like this, which you've seen before. You come up with, as I said, the professional starting points, for lack of a better way to do it. Then you could have a town hall in there with sticky pads and people look at it and say, well, I think I'd like this, 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 and this, and put up suggestions up there and they can take them together, distill those, and that, that's a good way to have public input. Just a thought.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Attorney.
Well, we don't have to reinvent the wheel because we've already done this. We did it with South Church Street. What Mr. Edwards says, they came up with what was possible. And then we had tables like this and we rolled all the, the plans out and everybody could walk around and people who were interested said, well, you know, this doesn't really work here. And we had engineers who were, who took notes and it just kinda happened. And that was, it was a very informal, easy way to do it. It was, we had several opportunities like that where people came in. And there were several iterations, iterations before, before there was ever any engineering done, people just came up with what works. And so we have a history of doing this and it worked pretty well.
Chairman. I'll keep it short and sweet. I'm all for it. I appreciate the, the, the clarifications and the explanations on what exactly it is that we're, we're trying to do and the dialogue behind it. And the more I hear about it, the more I'm willing to get started on it.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks, Mr. Cutler.
Can I just ask one, one more devil's advocate question, kind of based on what you said, Town Attorney? The, so our past plans that we had for South Church Street, are they not scalable to Gray Street and we could put that money into the execution vice?
They're, they're so deep, they're so site-specific and detailed, I don't think they would be a bit of help.
Well, the reason I ask the question is because it's gonna be something similar, right? The, what we did on South Church, something similar to what we did on Main Street, the lights are gonna be the same, if we use bricks, they're gonna be the same color. I mean, there's gonna be a lot of similarities.
They, they have to look at the specific areas that what we can do here. I mean, we're not talking streetlights, we're not talking that in depth. So what was done on those streets isn't necessarily applicable to here. So they're gonna look specifically at the corridor and what is possible in this corridor. So I, I don't know that we can take what we've done elsewhere and bring it here for this.
Thank you.
One of the real important things they did was they took stock of what was there. And that was really important because we had genko trees to deal with. I mean, it's, they're, and y'all have lots of, I think there's lots of crepe myrtles in the, all along in the medians down there. And they, they, the consultants took all that in consideration because that was really important in coming up with, like, like you said, what's possible.
Mr. Harris, one thing that I neglected to point out, a good example of why we need to look at this beyond the engineers is up at COP. Those trees had to come out and I hated it as bad as anybody in this town. I hate to see a tree go. And, but they had to come out. Well, what are you gonna put back? A little old crepe myrtle or are you gonna try to come up with a streetscape tree that, that works? We, we need to look at those things and look at them in detail as we move along. There are trees that are urban-friendly that can go places like that. And those decisions really need to be done with help from professionals and need to be done right.
Council members, one last shot. Everybody good? Ed, you got anything for everybody? We're good. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'm closing.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. At this time, we have Public Buildings and Welfare, Mrs. Butler.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. I'd like to open the Public Buildings and Welfare Committee with myself as chair, with Vice Mayor Harris and Councilman Cutler. The first thing on the agenda is pre-public hearing discussion, eight oh three South Church Street, water connection.
Yes, ma'am. This is, as part of the applicant special use permit comprehensive plan amendment, official zoning map amendment, applications on April tenth, twenty twenty, the applicants were provided a phasing plan that indicated that they would connect to town water and pave the parking lot by June one, twenty twenty-two. Since that time, the applicants have received additional entrance corridor overlay approvals, special use permits in twenty twenty-one that were conditionally approved on them connecting and paving the parking lot by June of twenty-two. It's Tuesday, October second, Town Council meeting. Town Council approved a SUP for a waiver of parking and loading requirement allowing for the gravel parking lot to remain. This was conditionally approved on the applicants coming back for a special use permit for a private structure to be connected to a private well. At the Tuesday, February eleventh Planning Commission meeting, it was unfully recommended to council with two dissenting votes that this application be denied. Town staff recommends that Town Council deny this application for the private well connection as it is in conflict with our current town code and current design standards. Applicants have received multiple special use permits and ECO approvals contingent on them connecting to the town water. Thank you.
Further discussion with Mark or any questions?
So you will, you do have a public hearing scheduled for this matter at your upcoming Town Council meeting. So this is a pre-public hearing discussion. If there's any other questions, we can help answer ahead of that.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm the source of endless questions. So I'm on the Planning Commission and, and sat through the hearing and discussion about this. And I was, I think I was one of two votes against this recommendation. And I do commend the Planning Commission for sticking to their guns and saying, you know, you agreed to do this. It was never necessarily something that was quite, wasn't quite forced on you, although they did have to come into compliance because of the construction work and rehabilitation that they did. But I think in the nature of our small-town character and that, and our small-town values with our local businesses, small business owner, not, it's, it's quite different from our anchor business, if you will, that we're careful that we don't place conditions on businesses that we run them out of town or out of business, if you will. I did propose that, a compromise of sorts at that meeting that probably exists mostly in language, but the special use permits, you know, as we've talked about a number of times and heard them as, some, some people refer to them as things that give us control. So the, the compromise that I had proposed was that we give them grace on the water connection. However, in the conditions of that special use permit that we require them to connect in the future, in the event that water becomes available on their side of the street, the cost, the, the large cost of this is bringing it from one side of, of Church Street to the other. So in the event that, say, those residences over there and, you know, the, the group of elements that are on the, on that well were to run out and the town was gonna bring water across to those residents, as much like was done for the rest of the residences in all those neighborhoods and we wound up somehow with this, I'm sure it was unplanned, water desert, that we, that we preserve this small business while at the same time holding them accountable to any future changes that should water become available at the same rate of anybody connecting on their side of the street, that we would require them to connect in the future. So that was, that was one proposed compromise that I discussed there.
Any more questions?
I have a question. I know this is before both yours and Tammy's time from when this whole process even started, but wasn't part of the agreement too that that was when the town was expecting to put in the bike-to-bike trail as well? And then it was going to be a little bit easier for this business to hook up? And now that hasn't happened. We don't know when it's gonna happen. I mean, I don't understand their, Tammy's talked about the arguments why they need to hook up and that's, that's one way to look at it. But that's why I think the, where the disconnect is, is that was part of what the thought process was back in the day, basically when this first started.
No, ma'am. At the time that this was approved, the bike trail was actually going down Lumbar, ironically enough. But no, so the bike trail being there or not being there wouldn't make this cheaper or, if anything, it would make it more costly because then you'd have to go further under, bore under, or you'd have to repave the bike trail to, to tear it up. So the bike trail wouldn't have impacted this as being a condition.
Okay. So I'll go one step further then, because I have spoken in favor of this in the past, that we should give them this relief. And part of that is they are the small business element that Darren has brought up, but also because it is a historic building and it's always been a commercial building, there, even though it's with, it's not in the historic district itself, but it is a historic building in town, then I think we, we, we treat those, those buildings a little bit differently and we offer them, this is a good example of a special use permit. It's an individual situation that, you know, we're glad that this building is being used in a very successful way at this point. It has been through many businesses in the past and some not so successful and it's been empty many times as well. So, so in that sense, like I said, I have spoken in favor of this SUP in the, in the past and I do think that we should give them some relief, partly because they are a small business and we wanna be friendly to small businesses, but also because it is a historic building and we're trying to preserve that. They could come in and knock it down and, and that part of history, that part of Smithfield history is gone. So the fact that they're repurposing it and there, there are cities all over the country that take historic buildings, whether they're warehouses or whatever, make them into condos or shops or, you know, they, they repurpose these buildings to enhance their history and the, what was there before. So, so none of this changes my mind. I'm still gonna be in favor of the SUP.
Ms. Wall, Bill?
Yes, thank you, Val. I'm, I'm gonna go devil's advocate as, you know, definitely a preservationist and a historian. But at what point do we say enough is enough? In this case, several other special use permits were permitted to this particular owner, contingent on him hooking up and honoring his first and original. We've had several discussions about that since, you know, the four of us were sworn. You know, when is enough enough? When do we say, you know, this was the agreement that you came in, these are our zoning regulations? It's a tough one, but I think we need to consider all of those things, you know, before going forward. But, you know, maybe a compromise would be a way to go. We need, you know, look at that a little bit more. But I'm very reluctant to just vote to forgive and forgive and forgive because we end up having to fix the messes that we're making because we don't put our foot down.
And the town did make an effort to help the business by not making it an immediate requirement when they got their approval. And, you know, you can see how long it's been, how much time we've given them to, to do this. And to, to your point, Mr. Vice Mayor Harris, that's my concern, is this is a requirement in our design standards that they agreed to while doing their project. And if we let them out of, we've already let... And if we let them out of, we've already let them out of the parking lot that they agreed to pave. We've agreed to help them with the cost through, using our contractors instead of the one that they had used, which already cut it in half from what they told us the cost would be. We, we set a, I think we set a unique precedent by, if somebody else redevelops a building that triggers the compliance with new design standards, you know, if we let one out, how do we not do it with the next one? That's my own, my concern.
But was there ever a point when, and like I said, this was before any of you all were here, that somebody said, you can apply for a special use permit? I mean, how many times do we have businesses, whatever? As I'm saying, it was never offered to them, but we have other businesses that come through here.
The ability to apply for that special use permit did not exist. So that's why it was a condition of their rezoning that they do the utility upgrades, and that it was phased out, was to help them not have to do it initially. So there was no avenue for a special use permit at that point in time.
And what changed that they couldn't now?
They're, they're asking for a special use permit to waive that requirement, and so that's something that's available to them now that wasn't then.
So then, in that regard, did they have an option to seek an alternative to either? It's because it sounds like their, their options at that time then were to do it prior to opening, or do it through a delayed effort in the rezoning application vice the new opportunity that came to request complete relief?
They had a, they had a timeline in the original rezoning. The change was, the, the code has been changed to allow for a special use permit for this. But at that time, the council, again, it was originally suggested that it be prior to them opening, and then they were given additional time to connect. So again, that was in an effort to help them, knowing that they were a new business starting up.
Right, but what I'm saying is that it doesn't sound like there was a mechanism for them to request relief at the time. It was either do it prior to opening or accept an extension conditioned on your rezoning.
And they could have come to the council without offering to connect, you know, but that was something they brought to the table. I mean, I could, can't tell you whether it would have been approved or not without complying with the requirements.
I don't think they brought connecting to the table. I think that was just a requi, that was forced on them as a, part of their.
Part of their rezoning package.
Yeah. So it wasn't, if they'd have had the option of bringing it to the table or not, I think they would have opted not to.
But ultimately, they opted to bring it.
I agree, and, and.
That's, that's, that's my only concern, is if we allow them out of this now, how do we then hold the next one? That you've got to have the connection because it's part of our design standards.
And that water connection design standard, you know, in discussing that in the Planning Commission over the last several months, you know, the applicability of that design standard, a two-inch line, is applicable to a really small subset of businesses.
Is this applicable to any commercial building is required to have it?
I mean, the necessity of use. The number of, of businesses that are going to utilize two-inch line worth of water is very small. It's a, you know, a car wash or.
Unless they have a sprinkler system.
Yeah, if they have a sprinkler system or need a fire suppression system. And it's there so that the next business that comes in is, can handle it. So if we approve a business and they only have a three-quarter inch connection, we approve that building for a business use. Now, the next use that comes in there that's a buy right business use, if it needs more than two inch, it doesn't have it. And then they've got to go tear everything up to put it in, whereas the first person in that does it, and they don't have to pay for the meter for that size, they're able to push it down to whatever size they need. So they're not having to pay for a two-inch meter and, you know, all that goes with that. It's, the only piece that's two inches is from the main pipe to the meter box.
Right, but that all works out great when the water mains on your side of the road. When it's not.
The bore under the road would be this, roughly the same cost, whether they're doing a two-inch bore or a three-quarter inch bore. So the, the size of the bore under the road isn't what's going to be the main cost, it's the fact that they actually have to go under the road.
Mm-hmm. And then, Vice Mayor, I think to your thought, you know, to what end? And I think to the end where we're driving a business out of business of, you know, the driveway and the water, I think, I think they had projected thirty thousand each was what they were contesting in, in hearing. Yeah. And so I, you know, I think to what end, I think to the end that we run someone, you know, a sole proprietorship or a partnershiped owned small business by our local residents, I think that's the end, personally. But I will say that I hope that we pay this much stringent attention in the Planning Commission and the planning staff and the council to this special use permit as the ones that we're going to have coming before us for residential development in the coming months.
I don't have any preference one way or another, or am not going to express it today, but one statement that was made, I, I beg to differ on it. It's, it appears that, it's believed that we offer S U Ps to developers upfront that we did not offer to this business. And I don't think we offer S U Ps to developers upfront. If Tammy or Michael has a pre-meeting with them, they basically go over our zoning and ordinances. So anything that deviates from that, I'm sure Michael and, and Tammy wouldn't say, you know, you can get by this, but because we can give you a special use permit. And in this particular case, based on what Tammy has shared with us, that when they came to us to open this business, I'm sorry, Tammy wasn't here then, it was John. John told them, because of what you're doing, it triggered that zoning, that they had to be in compliance with the connection, well, they should have been in compliance with the con, water connection as well as the parking lot. And there are several businesses along South Church Street and even Battery Park in which we've waived the paved parking a lot. And I know that that's come up with in planning before, just as Vice Mayor Harris said, you know, when do we say that this is the way that we would, well, this is what the ordinance calls for? So when will we stop allowing gravel parking spaces? We gave them a waiver for that, and now the water connection is the other waiver that they're asking. And, you know, Bill, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Harris is saying, you know, when do, at what point do we say that this is what we require, and this is what either the developer or the small business has to abide by?
Yeah, and we, we completely agree, actually. To what extent do we waive things? And what we have seen historically is special use permits that are perpetual, right? And what we saw in this case was a conditional special use permit that was defined over time. And I don't know what the conversations were, perhaps at the time of that application, because I believe this is, it had, was conditioned and then extended, right? So when they went and filed that special use permit to maintain their status quo for, I believe it was two years, perhaps if they had been advised, they could have followed suit of what the developers have done and requested a perpetual, or what they're requesting now, which was.
Do you think that that's how we advise develop, developers?
No, I think, I think the developers know what they're doing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, and I'm sure we can go back to when this application was applied for, from the minutes and the application to determine exactly what took place.
Yes, ma'am. But my point is, when we talk in the terms of our ordinance and holding, holding, you know, user, users of our ordinance to task and to enforcing our ordinance, that we do it, you know, if we're going to enforce on a, you know, small partnership, locally owned small business, that we're also doing it on the development that wants five-foot setbacks, contrary to our zoning, and the development that wants us to let them put ten homes per acre instead of, instead of five, or any countless number of loading distance, you know, that we pay equal attention to those things.
Mr. Chair.
Any more comments or questions about the pre-public hearing discussion for eight oh three South Church Street?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Councilman.
I've just been, been listening. I want to make sure I take it all in. Let's be clear on a number of issues. First and foremost, when this application was filed, they agreed in writing to make the connection. That's, that's, we can continue to go through all sorts of gyrations about what about this, what about that? They did that. They signed that document as a business decision when this occurred, just like any other person that fills out a building permit application for a water tap for their house agrees to pay for their sewer and, they, they agreed to do that. Now, you, if you listen to them, and I, I've done my due diligence too, where the term has been used, yeah, we did it because he put a gun to our head, or this other, whatever terms, nonetheless, we're dealing with business people that made a business decision to do that. And as a rule of law, that's number one. Number two, these S U Ps that we've been talking about have done nothing, nothing but stave off the enforcement of the agreement that they signed to till this instant moment. Had we adhered, and they had adhered, to what was going on, we wouldn't be having these conversations over and over again. That, that agreement was made. And again, I think as arbiters of the law, yes, we should be considerate in this, that, and certain, but, but this is something that after you've agreed to do this begs the question of flexibility. Well, I, I'm not really certain why we are where we are. Also, it's been mentioned that if we do this, it's going to put this specific entity out of business. If I'm not mistaken, and please correct me if I'm wrong, this entity as it existed when this application was made, no longer owns this business. They don't own, am I correct, or did I, did I dream that?
You're correct.
This is not the same business. It's a totally different enterprise. So this other enterprise is now taking, and I hope it was with due diligence and, and full awareness of what the scenario is, but this is not the same group of folks running this business. And apparently, if it was in such bad condition that it would put them out of business, caveat emptor, but this other group has bought this business and is operating it. As far as the element of it being an historic building, is this in fact a historic building under our definitions?
I'm not saying officially historic, Steve. I'm just saying it has been, it's been a business.
No, no, I get it, I get it. I was looking at it from the terminology used as far as historic.
I'm, I'm loosely meaning as that.
No, we're good. I just want, because I've, I've been around long enough to know when there was John in there cutting haircuts, because I used to get mine done when I was a troop, anyway. But I just, and then, last but not least, we have a planning commission that is trying to do the very best they can, and really appreciate Darren, your, your participation on there, but I believe they're trying to do the best they can to ensure uniformity. And when you have uniformity, the average citizen has an expectation of knowing what they're going to be confronted with in a given scenario, and if we start doing this, it's a whole lot of moving targets. Actually, I agree, we do, the S U Ps understand that sometimes they do become a, a vehicle for moving targets. But this one, if I were to put it up on the board right now, that we have the document where it's signed, where it's, I mean, a, a picture speaks a thousand words. We're not, we're not talking about what might have happened, there, that document's there. So I just, I, and I love Red Point. I, don't get me wrong, I had, had brunch there on Sunday, quite honestly, as a matter of full disclosure. But friends are friends, and business is business, and they, they entered into this willingly, and that's where we are. And maybe it's just, again, the law enforcement aspect in what makes me me. Some could say it's good, some could say it's bad, some could say sometimes it's either good or bad. I asked my wife, Lord only knows what she'd tell you, but anyway. That's, that's, that's my position, and that's the way I feel about it. So Madam, by the Vice Chair, or Madam Chair, thank you. I'm finished.
Any other comments or discussions about this? If not, we'll move it to town council meeting on Tuesday night for consideration for public hearing. The second thing on the agenda is a pre-public hearing discussion, three thirteen Grace Street, a B H A appeal.
Yes, ma'am. The applicant is appealing the Board of Historic and Architectural Reviews' February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five decision to deny the application for the installation of twenty-one rooftop mounted solar panels on the single-family dwelling at three one three Gray Street. As the board believes the solar panels are not in accordance with the historic district guidelines, and those are attached in your packet, the applicant believes she has met the criteria outlined for the solar panel installation in the twenty twenty-five historic district guidelines, therefore, the applicant has filed an appeal with, of the board's decision. According to the appeals process, the application has been forwarded to town council for review and decision. We mentioned solar panels four different times in our historic guidelines, page seventy-six, it says it should be located on the side or rear of the building, where the list says well from right away. Page ninety-eight, in general terms, says the same thing. Page one twenty-three, and then page one oh one is the overall guidelines that are below the staff report in the packet. The applicant and a solar representative are here. Do you have any questions for them or myself? Thank you.
May I have a question for council, please? Again?
I'm sorry, state.
Yes, ma'am. May I ask council a question?
Sure.
Is, is this appropriate at this time to have the applicant here at a pre-public hearing?
It's really not. She's going to get a bite of the apple next Tuesday, but I mean, if you want to answer questions, it's, it's.
I, 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 from a procedural and perspective, I have a difficult time with it.
It's an appeal.
Well, that's okay. That's okay. Lot, lot, I, I'm just asking you.
It is an appeal of the decision, though, historic. I mean, if it's your meeting, you can ask questions if you like to. That's, I mean, I, I can't say you can't, but that's, the idea is it should be a.
All I'm asking is that would it withstand the procedural test if it ended up in a court of law? That's what I'm asking you as the lawyer.
Fact finding would not be, would not disqualify your actions.
Okay.
Okay.
But just so you understand, the historic board heard her application, and based on their reasonable consideration and the application of the guidelines, denied the application. She has appealed that decision. And so your, your charge is to determine whether the historic board acted inappropriately or not, because they are, you would presume that they've acted, given some sort of extraneous factors, you would presume that they've acted appropriately. They have a presumption that they acted as they. They have a presumption that they acted as they should have, and they've applied to get the law and the guidelines as they should. And you have to make a finding one way or the other. And you get that opportunity at the, at your town council meeting. If there's something you don't understand that would help you, you think, but I don't know that now's the time for the applicant to make their case to you. That's not really the appropriate time to do that. If you need, if any of you have a question that you want to satisfy yourself about as far as factual matters concerning the solar situation or something like that, I think that's fine. But, you know, an appeal is really, an appeal is an appeal. And that's, the next step is the, a hearing before the board of the town council.
And as a point of clarification, it was a tie vote, correct?
That is correct.
It failed on a tie vote?
Correct. Well, there was one person.
And it was absent.
It was absent.
And that's what I asked Mark today. I know that there was a situation like that on planning, and planning decided to delay. And they had the, they reheard the case the following month.
But that was for a recommendation. This was, that would have been the, the action by the historic board was yes or no.
So they could not have delayed their meeting, their vote until they had full?
They voted, and the vote failed. And so they, at, once they voted, there's not, they don't go, okay, well, there was, there was nobody there to say, well, I didn't like the way I voted, so there's no re, there was no.
There was a missing person there, though.
Correct. But that happens all the time.
On the planning, which situation was that, Michael, that they delayed their action? I can't remember.
I don't.
What was that?
It was, it was, it was in the nature of a recommendation to town council about a certain action that should be taken. And so at that point, they weren't, they weren't.
So planning can only make a recommendation.
They can only make a recommendation.
Okay.
The board makes a decision. And at that point, a, a tie vote does not pass. If the motion was to approve it, and it's a tie vote, that doesn't approve the application. So it failed for lack of a, a majority vote in favor of the motion to approve. Okay? So at that point, the application failed. It was not approved. That's different from the planning commission where they wanted to make a recommendation, and they couldn't come up with a recommendation. And so they decided, we have an obligation to make a recommendation. Let's continue this to next month.
No, that's not what I'm talking about. The particular situation I'm talking about, Bill Davidson was absent that night.
Right. That's, I'm, it's exactly the same thing.
Oh, okay. All right. Then I'm confused.
I do have a question, though, Mark. We have new guidelines for solar panels. I'm trying to get an understanding of why the vote failed with B H A, or why did they feel that the applicant was not in compliance, or what questions were there with our current solar panel guidelines?
And the, Mark should not tell you that. You need to read the minutes, because.
I did.
Okay. Well, I mean, he can't, it's not, it's not appropriate for him to summarize one way or the other why they acted the way they did, because he can't, he can't tell you why they acted one way or the other. He's just staff members. Why, why a person votes the way they do is.
Oh, I don't mean individually why they, okay, Bill. All right. Okay.
I know, I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm trying to explain. This is a very, this is something y'all don't see very often. It's an appeal.
No, this is the first amendment.
I know that. It is an appeal, which means you, the board has already made a decision. Their decision was, was not to approve, under the circumstances we talked about. She did not get a positive vote to approve her application. She is making an appeal. You, your staff can't tell you why they voted one way or the other. All I can tell you is they, they did postpone action on this until the guidelines were adopted.
Were completed. Right.
Okay. So then they, they, that was with the consent of Ms. Payne.
Right.
Kelly Payne. With, with her consent, they, they waited a month because they, they were very transparent about that. They said, look, we don't have guidelines yet, but next month we're going to have them. And if you wait till next month, then we'll have tools to use in order to make a decision for you. And that's when they took the action. And she is not happy or satisfied with the, the action by the historic board, and she has the right to appeal to you. You, your staff can't summarize why they did, the board did what they did. All you can do is read the minutes.
And, 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 and council, to that point, it's actually, and I plan, it's almost irrelevant because, and I think we're kind of caught up in the weeds. The planning commission, except for their specific responsibilities where they can make decisions, they do make recommendations, as, as Bill said. This is a board that makes decisions. And what happened was, when the tie came down, it fails because of a, as Bill said, a lack of majority. So this is a, they're here, will be here next week, correct me if I'm wrong, to give their case, as if it was a brand, just as if a brand new case, except whatever you wanted to read for the minutes. But they're here, and they need to start from ground zero to make their case to this council, for this council then to make a decision as to, not whether, not whether the planning or B H A was right or wrong, but whether we now decide.
Correct.
And, and I'm not asking whether or not B H A was right or wrong. I, I read the minutes for January and February both. And based on the presentation that I read from the Pains, and based on what our guidelines are for solar panels, they seem as though they're subjective. And I think that some of the things that the Pains have done mitigate some of the things that we have in our current guidelines. So I don't really have anything else to say about that. Is there any more discussion on the solar panels for 313 Grace Street?
Are, are we able to, so we'll get, if we look at the minutes, are we able to, there are people on there that are on there because they're experts, contractor, for example. And I know he had an opinion on this. We use his opinion as part of the basis if we're reading it in the minutes.
You can, you, you individually can use whatever information deemed is most appropriate in order to make your decision. It's like Councilman Bowman said, you're going to hear this all over again. It's, it's, it's as if it's a de novo presentation, which means they, she gets to make her case, you, you listen to that, you apply the guidelines, and you apply the law under the provisions of the historic district ordinance, and then you come up with a decision, yes or no, you think it's appropriate. The, the, the conclusion you have to make as a member of the historic, of Board of Historic and Architectural Review, and now you as the appeal body, is, is this appropriate? That's based on the information you have before you and the guidelines you have. Is this appropriate?
Is this appropriate, or was their decision appropriate?
No, is, is.
Is this appro-
Application appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. It's, it's not, it's not the, you're not saying the board was right or wrong.
Okay.
Brand new case.
Brand new case.
Brand new case, yeah.
That's fine. Thank you.
And Bill?
Yes.
Are the representatives from B H A here Tuesday also, or is this pretty much Kelly's coming?
Brand new case.
No, no, it's a brand new case. It's for you to hear.
Okay.
And it will be a public hearing, so I mean, anybody is welcome to come speak if they wish.
And that's different. The application before the historic board is not a public hearing. It's, it's just, this is my application. Is it appropriate or not? But because this is an appeal, that's a different step.
Any more comments?
Yeah, let me just, now knowing that all of these different things are in play, I was, I was looking forward to having a conversation with the neighbor. I think it's best for us to move ahead till Tuesday and, you know, wait, wait and see what comes Tuesday.
Agreed.
Okay, you've already made that recommendation, so that's what will happen.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Number three is the pre-public hearing discussion on text amendment to Article 13 of the zoning ordinance.
Yes, ma'am. The, this application was favorably recommended to town council by planning commission. It is a proposed text amendment to Article 13, which are definition section of our zoning ordinance. To update those definitions to be in line with our Chesapeake Bay ordinance that was recently approved. These recommendations come at the hands of DEQ, I mean, DEQ, Department of Environmental Quality. They said that our definitions were conflicting, so they wanted them updated. And he brought the application to update those definitions. As they read in the staff report, we do suggest approval as presented. Thank you.
Any questions or discussion?
shorthand for that is you really don't have.
You don't have any. Yeah. Moving right along.
Next.
This will be moved to the public hearing next town council meeting. And the last, is this the, no, it's not the last thing. The next thing on the agenda is Bladed Property at 1502 McGruder Road.
Yes, ma'am. Town council, or the town of Smithfield received a complaint concerning the partially burned down structure at 1502 McGruder Road, T Penn 218 Tac 2, 8 Tac 007. Town staffers sent a notice, January 29th, 2025, to the applicant requesting an update on cleanup and repair of the structure within 30 days. This is in accordance with Smithfield Town Code 22, 22 dash 2 dot B dot 1. A plan was provided and distributed to council in accordance with section 22 dash 2 dot B dot 2. Town staff recommend, or request that town council determine the plan is acceptable, and then we move forward after that. A copy is, of that section is included with your agenda package as well.
Madam Chair, I think we should move that to town council meeting on Tuesday.
Is this your meeting or my meeting?
It's both of our meetings.
How about me?
So moved. Okay. Number five is the discussion on the Grange.
The, in your packet is the revised layout that we received based on comments from council's last discussion on this project. It, it's here for any additional questions, comments. If this is a layout, again, I think the applicant feels that there's general support around this. If that's the case, then they are prepared to go ahead and start working on all the documents they need to, to submit to move the approval process forward. They would have to come back to council for a revision of proffered conditions. Then they have identified that because there's a townhouse product now, there is a special use permit that has to go flow over that. All townhouse product requires special use permit in this district. So they will start that process at planning commission, and it will go through a public hearing process at planning commission and council. And then council is the only body that would have to see the amended proffered conditions. So that's where this is. And if there's any extra comments, concerns that you would like for me to take back to them, I'd be happy to do that. But I think they're prepared to move forward with developing the appropriate documents to get that ball rolling.
I have a question. Is, last time, there, there were some questions regarding the layout of the farmer's market and that. Since Judy is here, I'm just, are you satisfied with the changes made?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I do have a question. Procedurally, how, how do we approach the 1.4 million commitment on the farmer's market? Is that lumped in with this project, or is that a separate entity all, all by itself?
That's technically a separate thing. I think the project is probably, its viability as far as the market and everything is concerned, is contingent upon that. So I do believe that they would like a renewed commitment to the 1.4 million dollars towards the farmer's market project, but it is not specifically tied to the rezoning or any of that would be a separate decision council would have to make.
Michael, follow up with Jeff. The, the new proffers would specifically address all of the specifics here. We've heard a couple of times from Mr. Attorney since we've been sworn, that if things aren't black and white, written down, signed, and crossy, things can change. So I'm assuming that the new proffers would include all of the things that we have discussed, and all that have been represented in the lead-up discussions as well as this, this drawing.
Yes, sir. And you, you have seen suggested revised proffers previously, and so you would have all of those in front of you to, when you made the vote to either approve or not approve the revised proffer, you would have all that information and be able to read through it.
I ask, again, to back, piggyback on what Jeff said, I would need to see the formal written proffers, you know, before casting my, my yes vote.
Oh, yes, sir. You would have that in advance. And the way it would go is, we would have a discussion like this. There'd be a public hearing, and so you, it has to go through that process.
And they, and they'll track together.
Right.
Right.
The application for a special use permit for the townhouses will track with the amendment to the proffers. The, the planning commission is going to have to see all this anyhow. So it'll, it'll all follow along. So it's not like it's fragmented. It'll all be the same thing.
And do, and do we know, are there other special use permits that go with this plan, or just the townhouse?
Well, we know that the cottage product, I believe, requires a setback S U P. I don't know what the number, you know, what that is yet, and they will have to go develop that once they get further into their plans. But I believe those are the two that they have identified they may need, because currently the cottage product didn't exist. So they'll have to see what that looks like. I don't know what that is yet.
Okay. Thank you.
As of today, does the planning commission have every single thing that we have been given?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't believe so.
I don't think they've seen it for them.
But they will, once all the documents have been developed, they will get the full package, just like they would for any other project. And it'll go through their normal process.
And what's the, what's the timeline on that? I mean.
The timeline on them getting the documents or the process?
Well, both. I mean.
Okay. The documents is really going to be as quick as the development, developer's team can put those together. So that's really on them to do that. That, that's not up to us. Then the process would be, again, assuming planning commission did it in one meeting, which they could do it in two, it would be the normal, you know, advertising. So that's a month out, plus the meeting, then probably a month between that meeting and our meeting. So, I mean, there's still a significant process to get to the end of this.
Mike, Michael, the purpose of, on our agenda tonight, it says discussion on the Grange. So I guess if this new site plan is acceptable, you communicate that back to the developer, and then he res submits his package.
Right. And, and so again, the entire process is, they have been trying to come up with a plan that they felt council could support. You know, they had a prior approval, but they didn't want to move forward with something that wasn't supported by council. And so that's been the entire purpose of this. So if it is generally supported by council, then they feel like they would move forward.
Okay. But piggybacking on the question that Jeff asked, and I don't know, where does our conversation take place about the farmer's market? If we decide not to move forward with the 1.4 million dollars, do the developer move forward with the project, or is it contingent upon? I mean, how does that fit in?
I can't answer that question. In the past, he has said he doesn't move forward.
He doesn't?
But again, I can't, I can't answer that for him. I mean, that, that's not something I can, I can answer. I, I believe, I know for a fact that if the town is not contributing to the market, I don't see this building being built.
Okay. So where does that conversation take place? When does that conversation take place with us?
I, I think we need to have that conversation before you do or don't approve this project. Because this project clearly includes a farmer's market, and if we're not supportive of the farmer's market building, that needs to be clearly stated. You know, I wouldn't say, as soon as we can, as soon as council feels comfortable with it. Because again, they, they're not gonna move forward with the farmer's market building if they know council's not supportive of it.
May I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
To council. This deals, I guess, with the fact that a previous council has approved allocating that amount of money. And this is purely a technicality or technical question. If that council prior has approved those monies, if this council does nothing, are tho, do those monies remain, or do we have to have a motion to appropriate?
They've, that's been approved, you'd have to, the, the, the allocation, not the allocation. Yes, the allocation of that money, the, the commitment to pay that money has already been made. However, it's not been appropriated yet. That means you take it out, you'd have to appropriate the funds.
Yeah, I legally can't spend money that council has.
Just, I just, I just could not remember exactly what exactly council.
That would be the action that would have to happen. The, the formal action is council would have to appropriate the money in all.
That's me. I just, just trying to get my.
One thing, I think based on something Mr. Harris said, it seems to me, and you tell me if I'm wrong, would it be important, and then this would be in basically a, a less expensive proposition, but would it be appropriate or helpful to you and perhaps everyone else if you saw the written proffers before he goes to all the expense of all of this that's gonna be required in order to make a decision?
Yeah, exactly what I, yes, thank you.
I have provided that already.
Yeah, well, I mean, he's.
That was already submitted. There was a red line copy of the proffer submitted to council.
Well, based, I know, but it's gonna be based on, on.
Yeah, I'm looking.
On the, this, he would make written.
There, there might be some small tweaks based on numbers.
Okay, right.
But the general proffers wouldn't change outside of that.
But I think, if, based on what you said, Mr. Harris, I think you wanted to see what is your written commitment with respect to this? And then he, then that would be predicated on his, his, his pers, moving forward on this plan would be predicated on your decision to.
Yes.
That, that this is generally acceptable, this is, I understand what you're offering here. You know, I'm not voting on this, but I understand what's being offered. This is what's on the table.
Yes, perfectly summarized.
Right, okay.
Well, I will resend to you right now what, it was February eighteenth was when they submitted the proposed revision to us?
I understand that, and I have that when you're suggesting, by what you're saying, that you don't believe that he would make any more adjustments at this point.
I'm saying this is what they have proposed. If council's asking for adjustments, then that's something that they may be willing to.
Okay.
To talk about, but this is what they have told us is the revised proffers. Now again, if there's a housing number that needs to be amended in here, then, you know, we'd have to change that, but.
I have a question, another question about the farmer's market, and I'm just trying to clarify things. So when the previous town council voted in favor of this one point four, that was also a different building. I mean, it was had garage doors and hu, you know, this is more of an open air pavilion, is it not, right? So, um, seemingly cost less money than what was previously.
The commitment previously, previously was for up to one point four million. The contribution would have been based off what the building cost. And so even at that time, we were doing some value engineering to the structure itself.
Okay.
To get it down to where it would be at or below those contribution levels.
Gotcha.
Again, if it winds up being a two million dollar building, it's only a million apiece.
Okay.
So, but the.
The county has already appropriated their one point four.
Yes.
And so the assumption is that we're going to pay an equal amount.
We would contribute up to that amount, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, Michael, I guess you'll get back with the developer based on the conversation about the new, uh, site plan that has been submitted to us?
What I will do is I will reach out and ask for them to submit us a final version of the proffered conditions. That then can come to council, and ultimately, that's what you'll be voting on, is whether you amend the proffered conditions or not. So that way you will have the final version and know that through the planning commission process, there may have to be tweaks based off what they want. But that would give you an idea of what they expect the final proffered conditions to be.
Darren.
Ma'am, if I may, I have a whole list of thoughts, so I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna keep it short, I'm just gonna keep it short here.
Yeah.
First, you talked about the proffers, the red lines in it.
Yes, sir.
Proffer number seven says dated to be confirmed. Who's confirming that? Are we getting that from the school system, or are we trusting somebody's hired advisor?
Well, let me, they, their hired advisor, that report then goes to the school system, gets reviewed. And if the school system has concerns with it, they submit those comments back to us, and we have them addressed. So anything that's done like that by a third party hired by the developer is reviewed by those regulatory agencies. And any concerns have to be addressed. So when they did their impact studies, those were reviewed by the schools. So what they'll have to do is because the, they're gonna submit us a revised memo for the traffic study to indicate what the new, um, traffic demands, things of that nature are, and whether or not the previously proposed improvements are still sufficient. Um, we'll get one for the financial impact analysis as well, that'll indicate what the new numbers are. So we will get updates to all of those documents as they go through this process. And they'll get reviewed by the applicable agencies. Um, so again, the schools will say, yes, we agree with that, or don't agree with that. And, and the same thing with the traffic and everything of that nature.
But the schools have already, have already done this work, right? I mean, they talked about it here at the intergovernmental meeting, so.
They have. And so they will, but again, they'll get another look at it because it's changing. So.
Are we gonna have, can we get their report as well then, so that we have something?
They don't give a report, that's.
They presented a report at the intergovernmental meeting.
Systems, they don't, they're, it's, that's a real conflict point right now, is because applicants who are trying to get information from the school department, the school reporter say, this is what, this is what our conclusion, and they don't give you, they're, they say it's proprietary. And so I don't think you're gonna get their methodology.
I don't want their methodology, just their results.
They'll just tell you, they'll just tell you how many students they think it's gonna be.
They present, I mean, that's, that's what I would like to see.
Right, and they, what they'll do is they will confirm whether they agree with the numbers that the consultants hired have indicated. So they will agree with it or not agree with it, and if they don't, then they'll have to go correct that. But yes, we'll supply you all the comments that come from those agencies.
And then I just, just a couple of things for food for thought that come to mind for me. We toured, we had a great tour, uh, that the town manager put together, so thank you for that. Uh, Public Works is amazing. Uh, Parks and Rec is amazing, I mean, it was, it was a great time, looking forward to the police department and other facilities coming up. But as I walked around, so we went to Luder Sports Complex, we came here, we went to Windsor Castle Park. Well, it didn't occur to me just then, but it occurred to me discussing with, with the council then, that we looked at skin in the game at every one of those places, right? And you look around us, right, renovations that were done in this building, renovations that were done in Windsor Castle, future plans for Luder Sports Complex, and we, we have skin in the game in perpetuity on these projects. So the one point four two, which is actually two point eight, right, and we pay into the one point four from the county. So two point eight million dollars that is, is funded heavily by Smithfield taxpayers. For skin in the game, that is already in effect. If we receive a building from anyone, right, just the same as we received land from Napali, uh, Mr. Napolitano for the development, uh, down Battery Park Road, uh, we now have skin in the game on that piece of property because we have to maintain it, right? If something happens on that property, we have to pay for it, our taxpayers now have skin in the game. Um, so I think that phrase is a little misleading. Um, secondly, so I, I went to the planning commission course, Certified Planning Commissioners Course, I'm a certified planning commissioner now, as well as our vice mayor. Uh, hold your applause, please.
We are too, now we're measuring, we went through that thing, golly dang.
Uh, great course, great course. But one thing I learned, and I had no homework assignment. Yeah, it was a little bit of a snooze fest, but, but I learned a lot, though. Uh, the homework, and one of the things I did was watch the Suffolk Planning Commission meeting, and, uh, some of this question is, is for you, uh, Mr. Riddick. Um, but what I watched on the Suffolk Planning Commission, I'm gonna spare some of what I'm gonna talk about the planning commission on y'all, but if you want the deets on that, you know, planning commission's coming up in a couple of weeks. But, um, Suffolk had a straight up, it appeared to me, and, and Vice Mayor, you can chime in any time, equation, if you put this many kids in our schools, you will pay this much.
It is, it's, and I can't wait for somebody to say that, because it is so abundantly clear by, by the law. You can't do that. If you can't say, if you don't pay me this, I'm not gonna approve your project. That came down about ten years ago, and because it used to be, Iowa County had, you, you paid eleven thousand one hundred eighty nine dollars for every school student, and if you don't do it, you're not getting yours zoning, 'cause I did a ton of it. And they can, the law changed, and you can have a conversation with the developer, and you can bring that to their attention, but you cannot say, if you don't pay me that money, I will not approve it. And if you do, they're gonna sue you and they're gonna win.
Right. So, Ms. Venable, I think, was the developer who I think most of you are familiar with. Um, they didn't even ask, they walked in and presented and said, here's what we're giving, and it's based on what you guys want, basically. Maybe it was, maybe it was an old, maybe they were just using the past equation, I don't know. But what I would implore our council to do, and, and Mr. Attorney, for you, for you to help us with, is, um, this proposal that if I'm the developer that gets your town school to a hundred percent, then I'm on the hook, well, I'm just gonna say that is, I think that's out of line. If our schools are at ninety five percent, our middle school is, I think, at the mo, one most at risk, is it correct? Is at ninety four, ninety five percent, well, that ninety fifth percent, ninety six percent, ninety seventh percent student that is brought in to fill this development contributes to our school getting to a hundred percent. And I think that every developer that is bringing new students into our town should be paying proffers that support our schools. Now, con, on the converse of Suffolk is York County. And York County is not letting, if you bring a school, if you bring a school student into the county, you're disapproved. That's where they're at. So that's where this can swing, right? If we get to a hundred percent and we have zero dollars to build a school, we wind up as York County who approved loads and loads of development, they didn't proffer any money for their schools, now you can't build a house in York County if you're bringing a kid into the, into the county, according to, was a council member uh, that we sat with at the, at the planning commissioner course. So I think we really were looking at the Grange, the Promontory, the cottages. Um, Mallory, which is, I think is a done deal, but, uh, potentially, um, Benny coming back with something else and, in the historic district, right? And I'm, I just implore all of us, myself included, to figure out a solution, to work with the attorney on how we get all developers to support our schools, not just the one that puts us over the limit, okay?
And, and you're, and you're right about that. There needs to be, just for Suffolk, for example, I'm assuming that what Ms. Venable has done is she sees the handwriting on the wall. She says, there's, there's, there's demand in the schools, and they have schools in their CIP, and we're going to voluntarily proffer what we know to be the right number, because we want you to approve our private.
Yeah, so I guess what I, now say it without, I was trying to not say it, is maybe you can help us figure out how to, how we make this happen for us. Because we can't, even though we don't have schools in Smithfield technically, all our students that we approve developments for go into these schools that we fund through our county taxes.
And we have an agreement with the county that we will, that we will always look at that, and then we will pass on proffers for development that impacts the school system.
Yeah, but I think now we have three developers that are in a race effectively to not pay proffers. And I'm, I'm, when I talked to the Promontory guys, I said, I think that sounds pretty unfair, that if you guys put in the ninety eighth percent student and the ninety ninth percent student, and the cottages puts in the hundredth percent student, that you're not helping support our schools through the profits of your business that you're building in our, in our town. I didn't say that to him, but I.
This is that, this is that moment where I get to jump in. As an educator, it's been through this forever. I don't understand why there's a difference between the student that doesn't take us over capacity and the student that does. It costs the county the exact same amount of money to educate every kid. So we need to, you know, kind of, you know, look, if you're bringing thirty kids in, that's gonna cost the county thirty times whatever it is. Not just the one kid over capacity, so that, that just kinda fits into what Derek was saying, you know, as we move forward and trust our town attorney to manufacture something brilliant.
Hence the, the conversations you need to have on the front end with developers about the impact on schools.
Right, which is what Suffolk does.
Um, and I'll close with, um, before I ever saw anything about the Promontory, on my doorstep, literally, a two inch binder was dropped off of drawings, setbacks, what they were requesting from the town for special use permits, and why, um, really an overload of information, and in this project, I guess this is all we get, right, is one page. I mean, it is. We don't even have, we don't, we don't have the proffers that we requested, and the questions that we asked were answered generally or not answered at all. But let, let me just finish by saying that, um, being on the planning commission that, you know, we have a developer that's looking for us to say, yes, we're gonna support your, your project. Right, and that's really difficult for me, going to the planning commission, because if I say I support your project, I have to go to the planning commission, I have to say, okay, so I support this SUP because this drawing that I said I supported requires five foot setbacks. It requires density in excess of the limit, it requires exceptions to loading and zoning, it requires an SUP for the townhomes. So for me, that is gonna be a really hard, very unlikely preemptive yes to this, to this project.
Well, now that you bring it up, I have been thinking, and that's dangerous, long and hard, as far as our town council member being assigned to the planning commission, being put in a position where they have to vote. Concerns me a little bit that you're, you're exactly what you just said, that you, you're maybe leaned on a little bit before when you go to the planning commission, when it was always my understanding that the person assigned to the planning commission from the town council was the conduit, was the liaison. And if you didn't have to vote on it, and you could be the conduit, the liaison, and things like that, wouldn't that make things a little bit easier for you?
Um, if I'm fully understanding your question, perhaps, it's not something I've thought about, but, uh, the bylaws are, you know, don't go either way on, on that.
I've read them.
Yeah.
I just wonder, I've always wondered, and that, and that's just conversation for another time at ten after six, but at the same time, I've always wondered philosophically whether a member of town council should be a voting member on the planning commission while they're coming back and voting again on that project in front of town council. Just seems to put the member in a difficult position. But then again, from an appearance perspective, we were talking about two bites out of the same apple earlier on a, on a hearing. I just, it just seems to me like it would be a lot easier for the council member if he was there or she was there as a, as a conduit and not having to be put in that position to. And not having to be put in that position to make the decision one way or the other while you're at the advisory level. And that, that caused me to kinda think about it when you just said what you said, as far as, uh, maybe I misunderstood when you were saying about support and things like that, but.
Yeah, perhaps. I mean, we have a conduit, this is Ms. Clary, uh, and we don't have the same arrangement on our other, you know, BHR And, uh, BZA, where we have a council member appointed.
I just, that's something to think about for what it's worth.
Darren.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct me. Maybe I misunderstood what you're saying. You're, hmm, you're saying based on the new site plan that we have That you don't have sufficient enough information to make a decision? To me, this Grange project has kinda been out of the ordinary. Because when the original package was submitted to us, just like that big stack that you got with the Promontory, That's what we've got, that's what we initially received with the Grange. And it's kinda metamorphous into, this is the third site plan, I think, that we've gotten. And we didn't get the additional information to go along with it, because I think the developer wants us, Well, wants to submit something to us that he feels that would be favorable, that he could move forward. So I would think that in, when we get to that point, that he would provide all of those supporting documents That Darren says are missing now.
But that's not the typical process that we have. I mean, you know.
This is, she's.
This is, this is out of the.
Oh, I agree.
No, but he, here's the difference. He has vested rights. He has an approved project. That if he doesn't build it, somebody else will. Um, he is, by his own admission, in front of you, he's told you, I'm trying to reach an accommodation with you, because I want to go forward with your support, not with your opposition.
Right.
And, and that's the difference between, the Promontory is, they don't have anything. They're, they're, they're asking you, Here's what I wanna do. I want you to approve it. Here's every piece of information you need. The, the Grange has already been vetted and approved, and, and.
That's a, that's a great point. I mean, it was vetted, approved, a shovel was never put in the ground. We got revision two surprised on us, brought smiles around the room, and then that was changed to a less desirable. And then we had, and that was, so that was revision three. And then we had another meeting, and he said, Yeah, if that's what y'all want, I'll go back to revision two. Right? We have smiles around the table again. And then the next morning, we get back version five. Right? That's not possible. I should've checked with my business partners. And so, you know, I agree with you. He has an approved project that if it was a moneymaker, there'd have been shovels in the ground. And we're getting, I feel like we're getting a little wishy-washy here on this, on this topic, That we don't know, you know, this version five is different than version three. So, you know, now we have, we've had five site plans, four of them in two months. So, yeah, is there enough information? I mean.
Okay, most people just tell you, I'm done. And maybe that's what he's gonna tell you. He might just tell you, I'm done. I think he, he, he tru- he truly wants to build this project. And he's trying to find an accommodation that will satisfy the concerns That were obviously raised by the election of new members to the town council. He says, I don't wanna do this if I have to fight you. And so, that's, it's nothing more than that.
But he didn't have to fight. The project was approved. It wasn't even generally supported. It was supported by a majority of the council.
Okay.
So.
I, I, I can't answer your questions. I don't have to.
That's all I have.
The, the only comment I would say is if this was a new rezoning, you would have a two-inch stacked binder. And the reason you don't is because it's not a new rezoning. Um, so every project that comes in for a rezoning, you're gonna get a two-inch stacked binder if it's a project of this nature. The only reason you haven't is 'cause, to Phil's point, he's doing superficial changes of conceptual layouts To try to get support. So that's why you don't have a two-inch binder. Every rezoning project that ever comes before us, You will get that. And you get all of that information every time.
Uh, I appreciate that information, but when I asked questions, right, he, he said, send me questions and I'll answer them. And when I asked specific questions that would've been represented through having that, that data, The questions, he declined to answer them, specifically about what other special use permits are you gonna need?
Well, because the answer was, we haven't done the engineering yet to know. So, I mean, he can't answer that at a conceptual level until they do the engineering to know.
I think he could answer them very, at least, generally, at least, he knows, well, am I gonna, I'm gonna need an SUP for a townhouse?
Well, he does now. When you, when you asked those, he wasn't proposing townhouses. So now.
Yes, he was.
Well, so now he, he's kinda got it figured out. He knows he needs one for townhouses. He knows he's probably gonna need one for setbacks on the cottages. And the hotel height, they're trying to get it under the, now that it's a hundred and set up eighty, They're trying to bring the height down to where it's under the previously approved SUP. So now that they're pretty close to the end, they're trying to iron that stuff out. I mean, at the very beginning of it, generally is all they could answer, but they, they didn't have enough information to know.
I just, I appreciate your insight, but he's got a professional developer. He's got an approved plan. Every other developer knows what SUPs they, they need, very specifically. So to not know that you, what you would need generally, that I'm gonna need a setbacks SUP, I mean, he just went through the process. But it's, I mean, it's okay. I'm just, what I'm saying is, there's a lack of information that could be provided. That's, that's my opinion.
And you'll get all that as they go through the SUP process.
But that process will only start if we give conditional, that we're generally support the project.
Because he's not gonna go forward to do all that work for a project he knows he doesn't have support for.
But every other developer does.
It's, but he has, but he has vested rights, and that's the part you don't understand.
The size of his project to try to get support.
Clearly do not understand.
I do understand.
No, you don't. You clearly don't. Because he's, he is, he's making a, a dramatic, um, He, he's shrinking his project dramatically, and in lieu of doing what was approved, he's offering as part of his profit conditions To give the town un- the, the land. I mean, all those things in an effort to, to, he wants to go forward. He says, my father wants to build this. Most people would've gone away a long time ago. I don't know why he had now.
I, I think he's got a general interest in doing something he knows the town supports. I mean, he could go build what was approved before right now, but he doesn't want to do something that the town isn't happy about. I mean, I generally think that that's true and honest when he says that. Um, because otherwise, he would've gone and, and built it. But he doesn't wanna do something that leaves any sort of negative legacy for his family. He wants something that the town can get behind and support. And that's the only reason I think he's doing this.
I think he wants everybody at the ribbon cutting contest, a ribbon cutting ceremony.
Right. And so I think he's got different motivations than your normal, average, run-of-the-mill guy. I mean, that's just my read on it. And I, so I think that's what's driving it more than anyone else.
It's not just his read, it's what he said. It's what he said when he came here. It's exactly what he said.
Well, he also said he was giving us Plan Two in January, and then Plan Three in February, and then Plan Four, and then Plan Five.
He proposed Plan Two, and at that time, he indicated that he was gonna look for the town to help build the wall and help with underground utilities. I went back to him and said, Joe, we're not gonna do that. What would it take for you to do all that on your own? And that was a conversation I had with the mayor and a couple of other folks on council. And council said, yes, we think that's a great idea. So I went back to him and said that. That's where the next plan came from, is this is what it would take for me to not ask for a penny from you. So that's why he went there. It wasn't because he was trying to pull the wool over your eye. I, we asked him to go do that.
Right. And then he brought it back, and then he, and then we said we didn't like it, and he went back.
And he went back and made it smaller.
And then he came back the next day and said that wasn't possible.
Well, 'cause he misspoke in the meeting that he could go build that original plan without asking for a penny from the town. He made a mistake. And he said he made a mistake. It wasn't like he went and, again, pulled the wool over, I, he told us, I misspoke. We can't do that without asking for money. This is what it would take to do it. So that's how we got to where we are. It wasn't a, a shell game or any of that. I mean, that, we asked him to go do that, and he did it.
And to clarify that, I haven't brought it up, 'cause I'd need to. I'd been home probably fifteen minutes when I received a text. And that's exactly what it said. I misspoke. I should've checked with my development, development team before I said what I said, But I did it in, 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 in honest hope of getting the project through. Exactly what he told me.
I, I guess my question of town council is, what direction do we want to give Michael to go back with the developer?
Can I speak? Yeah. I've thought about this a long time, and, and he's done a lot to step up to the plate and try to work with the town. And it's like Michael has said, other developers don't do that. They keep asking for more and more and more, Which I feel like that he's showed, um, the possibility that. He's generally wants to work with the town and do whatever he can. He's, um, he's not asking for any money for infrastructure. He's talked about building the wall, not by us, he's gonna do that. He turned around and has talked about giving seventeen acres of land to us. And, um, I, I feel like it's a, it's a jewel piece of property, number one. Number two, with us having the ability to have that seventeen acres, we don't know what the future's gonna bring. We might have to build something over there ourselves, for a new center or whatever the case may be, but we have it available. It's gonna be a long process. This is not gonna happen three months from now. That's why we've talked about the, the farmer's market and length, about what we're gonna do in the interim. Um, and if it fails, what are we gonna do? So all this is being considered and talked about. So I, I feel like, I, I'm for letting him give us the, the, the proposal, is what he's gonna do so he can move forward And then let us look at the numbers. I mean, that's how I feel about it.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Phil?
Yeah, I'd be glad to, to weigh in. Pretty much anybody that's followed this for a while knows that when I was on the other side of the table, Although I've always been in favor of something going on that land, I resisted quite a bit of the original proposal Primarily because of density and the impact on infrastructure and schools. What has been proposed to us now, um, I would be inclined to support If I have black and white period infrastructure, um, reference to the proffers, And what would actually be in there. You know, 'cause it seems to be, I hear everybody, you, all, all of you talking, kinda missing to me Darren's point. Part of the problem for us is, we're being asked to commit public money Without having a full picture of what that commitment really entails. Okay? As long as things can possibly float, that's a more difficult thing. You know, if, uh, Mr. Luter comes up and give, you know, gives us a solid contractual proffer obligation And tells us what's coming, you know, and then maybe a listing of the SUPs that it would, that he would seek. That, I think it would, you know, be, be easier. But at this point, I would be inclined to be in favor.
And just remember, Mr. Harris, to your point on that, on the, um, farmer's market, it's always been in writing and, and I think generally understood, But just so you, that the, the design, the scope, the size, all of the decisions about farmer's market are yours in conjunction with the county. He's not gonna design that, what he, he said a million times, I will build whatever you want to build. And so you build, if you choose that your budget, budget is two million dollars, you build a two million dollar building. If it's two point eight, you build two point eight. But I think that needs to be understood by town council. And your, and your decision about making a commitment on that is, you build what you want and what you can afford. And that's not the type of building or whatever is not part of his proffers.
Right.
It's not gonna be. So don't expect to see that in there.
Can I ask about the SUP that's required for the townhouses? Is that, um, a height thing? Is that?
The use.
Just the use? Does it have to be a, uh, a three-story townhouse, or can it be a two-story? I, I hate to get in the weeds like this, but, um, you know, that's the thing that's kinda driving me crazy on this Plan, which, like Bill said, I generally would support because it is smaller than what it was. But I had a problem with the apartment buildings when they were there, and I have a problem with the townhouses. Because they are very, they're ve- they're too big for downtown. Now, if they were to match the townhouses that were across the street at Church Manor, no problem. But a three-story townhouse in downtown Smithfield, I'm really having, I'm really having some trouble with that. It would look a lot better if it matched what was already across the street In terms of height and scale and stuff like that. We're just talking about what we like, what we don't like. I'm just putting that out there.
Didn't the planning commission go, have it initially at four stories and then worked, or was it three?
They were the apartment buildings.
That was apartment building. Yeah, that's. Are you talking about townhomes? I'm sorry.
Mark, have we ever seen, got any, we gotten elevations on the townhouses?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. But as clarification for the townhomes, it's setbacks in height is what will be the SUP. The height, maximum height and the plan makes use is thirty-five feet. So, so.
Which is basically three stories. Is that not right?
It could be. Yeah, it could be.
And that's where I just have real heartburn. It just, it does not fit into the downtown. I don't like townhouses.
First of all, they're, you know, it's always been propos- always been said, oh, well, these are, you know, this is, that's what's affordable housing. It's not. You know, we're talking affordable. The cottages are a great option. I just wish, and I would, anyway, I wish it was more of that than the townhouses, because I think that that look does, it doesn't, we're not Suffolk. We're not Yorktown. We're not all these, all these local towns that are building these townhouses. That's not Smithfield. And when we're putting that in our downtown historic district, I'm really having a problem with it.
I guess he needs to send you some elevations, because if, if you live, because you can go to, you can go to the fan in Richmond, and they're beautiful. But you, you have to, it depends on what he wants to build. I mean, I think that's probably what he needs to show you.
This says townhomes hike, building heights forty feet.
Right now, the max they could do is thirty-five, unless it was approved for something more than that.
Which would be the SUP.
Right. They would have to ask for.
A SUP.
To go higher than thirty-five. And the same, you see the hotel listed on this plan is forty-two. I think the SUP that was approved was thirty-nine. So they were working to get the hotel down under that height.
So this site development plan is not really even accurate?
Well, I mean, you're talking three feet. I mean, and if they didn't get a special use permit to go forty, Then they would have to do thirty-nine. I mean, and that's just some site work they could do to make it different.
Michael, I, I don't really know what to tell Joe, you know. Uh, I, I guess we're in agreement with this site plan. If he wants to provide the. I, I guess we're in agreement with this site plan, if he wants to provide the documentation to go along with it, and we'll relook at it. But, you know, this project has kind of not been in order as ones that we've approved in the past.
If I was to tell him anything, quite honestly, I would come to make sure that he watched this presentation.
That's going to be my suggestion.
Darren, any more discussion?
I'm all good, but thanks for asking.
Wait, 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 wait.
If not, that concludes Public Buildings and Welfare.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming out.